Whereas the Stafford County School Board has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and whereas Section 2.2-3712 of the Code of Virginia 1950 as amended, requires certification by this school board that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law, now therefore be it resolved that the Stafford County School Board hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting and to which this certification applies, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered.
It's been moved and seconded. Madam Clerk, will you pull the board, please?
Ms. Egan.
Agreed.
Ms. Hazard.
Agreed.
Ms. Healy.
Agreed.
Mr. Hirons.
Agreed.
Ms. Kidby.
Agree.
Mr. McOscar.
Agreed.
Madam Chair, your motion passed unanimously.
Thank you very much. I would ask those in the auditorium tonight, or where we are, to please stand for our invocation and pledge of allegiance. I'm going to ask Mr. Hirons to speak about the passing of a very good friend to Stafford County Public Schools before we go on with our pledge of allegiance.
I'd like to offer our condolences to a dear friend of Stafford County Public Schools and education here in Stafford County. Many of us in this room know Jane Connor. She served on the Stafford Education Foundation, as well as many other activities here in Stafford County. Jane lost her husband Al this past week. He passed away from a long battle with cancer. I would ask that all of you, please keep Jane and the Connor family in your prayers.
(Applause). (Inaudible) of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would like to move on to, do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve the agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. The agenda is approved. Now moving on to, really, one of the favorite parts of the meeting. This evening is on to awards and recognitions. I'd like to recognize first Dr. Benson, Superintendent, for presentation of awards.
We're ready.
Okay. Madam Chair, school board members, it's my pleasure this evening to recognize a group of our students and their advisor whose efforts enable our Stafford Education Television Channel to be on the air and provide all support for televising and streaming your school board meetings. This group of broadcast interns are finishing their year, and a new group will be joining us this summer. We wish to take this opportunity to recognize the students and their advisor, Mr. Bill Leep. Would students and Mr. Leep please come forward? On behalf of the school board, we thank you for your service and dedication for producing our school board meetings and television programming. So we get everybody to come up? You have to leave your cameras unmanned?
That's right. Come on forward to our great students.
So we have Tyler, George, Caleb, and Tyra.
(Inaudible).
That's right.
Just real quick, Mr. Leep and his crew work overtime, not only filming these things that you're sitting in right now, but they also do a lot of work with the students for Quiz Bowl, and a lot of after-hours activities that the film crew wholeheartedly and happily support, so I'm just so happy to give Mr. Leep and his crew, and his film crew, a little bit of atta boy and atta girl. Be inclusive here, right? And just keep up the good work, and we really appreciate the long, because you all stay as long as we stay, and it's pretty miserable sometimes, right? So, thanks a lot. Who's it, who I have here? Tyler? Tyler, I would like you to get on this side, most skinny when you're shooting.
Tyra?
Hi.
George.
Thank you so much.
Take it off that camera up there.
Let's give them a... Next, I would like to recognize Anna Marie Bellino, Coordinator of Fine and Performing Arts, for the presentation of awards.
Good evening, Chairman Hazard, school board members, Dr. Benson. It's my pleasure tonight to recognize Stafford's most gifted musicians. This is truly one of the best parts of my job, as I'm sure it is many others, to recognize these outstanding students and teachers for their commitment to excellence. I'm pleased to begin this evening by presenting nine elementary music students who participated in 2016 All-Virginia Elementary Chorus. This event was held in Northern Virginia, and over 200 students and 30 schools within the Commonwealth participated in this honor's choir. Before I bring the students up, I'd like to invite their music teachers, Julie Param from Hampton Oaks Elementary, and Christian Peabody from Falmouth Elementary, to come on up.[447.31][447.31](Applause). And I'd like to thank these two teachers in particular for going above and beyond to provide such a rich musical experience for the students at their schools. I know they're very proud. Students, please come forward when your name is called, and remain at the front until everyone is called. From Hampton Oaks Elementary, Lily and Elmore, Maya Kuhn-Omi Tagun, Deborah Pallett, and Amber Todd, and from Falmouth Elementary, Natalie Aras, Gloriana Coffey, Brienne Fitzpatrick, Erin Howgan, and Isabella Crowder. Please give, join me.[486.77][486.77](Applause).
We thought you were going to sing your awards, Ms. Bellino.[493.31][493.31](Laughter).
I'm not quite that gifted, Ms. Hazard. I have a little stage fright. Thanks again. Congratulations, students and teachers.[505.31][505.31](Applause). One of the things I always like to say is that great high school music programs, which we're going to introduce now, really begin at that elementary level with talented, dedicated elementary music teachers, parents, support staff, whose engaging and rigorous instruction begins encouraging students and training them for that high level of musical excellence that you're going to hear about now. So thus, I would like to recognize our 2016 All-State Choir students. This year, 19 of Stafford County's finest vocalists were selected for this honor. These students competed against 200 students within our district for 24 slots, and I might add, we took 19 of them. Please, please also note that we have representation from each of our five high schools, which is something we're very proud of. I would like to invite our choral directors up to the front. From Brookpoint High School, Stephen Shelburne; from Colonial Forge High School, Barbara Perry; from Mountain View High School, Benita Keen; from North Stafford High School, Kate Trunkelbach; and from Stafford High School, Jo Eveler. And, please, let's give them a round of applause.[581.16][581.16](Applause). And students, please come on up when your name is called. From Brookpoint High School, Danielle Ferrand; from Colonial Forge High School, Jacob Bailey, Catherine Brooks, Hannah Fullwider, Danielle Houston, Meredith Lob, Mason Sigmund, Kennedy Triplet; from Mountain View High School, Tara Truax, Teresa Weigasoff; from North Stafford High School, Laura Abramson, Tayandra Allen, Jasmine Ward; and from Stafford High School, Jonathan Carr, Helen Murphy, Amber Lee Thomas, Vanessa Volo, and Trevor White. Please join me in congratulating these talented singers.[624.66][624.66](Applause). Congratulations, students and teachers.[633.54][633.54](Applause). To earn placement in All-Virginia Band, students first audition at the district level in December, then they go through a rigorous audition in February if they're at the top of the district. And these students that we're recognizing tonight went through two successful auditions to earn a place in the member, as a member of the 2016 band. Students, please come forward when your name is called, and let me also invite our teachers. We've got Matt Nelson, the Director of Bands at Colonial Forge; Jean Welch, the Director of Bands at Mountain View; and Austin Nicholas from North Stafford, our Director of Bands. I know we have a couple conflicts tonight, too, with band concerts, so they might not be in attendance, but we'll clap for them anyways.[717.23][717.23](Applause). And our band students, from Colonial Forge High School, Sydney Salata, Cougar Conley, Macana Maderos, Dante Stokely; from Mountain View High School, Austin Fairley, Renee McGee, Laura Watson; and from North Stafford High School, Max Schenk. So please join me in a round of applause for these musicians.[743.66][743.66](Applause). So, I'm not finished yet, sorry about that. It's a pretty fun night, because we also have three county band programs from Colonial Forge High School, Mountain View High School, and Stafford High School who've earned the recognition as a 2016 Virginia Honor Band. So high school honor bands receive this distinction when both their marching band and their most advanced concert band, usually called their wind ensemble, receive superior ratings at their performance assessment in October and March. And so this year, among the Commonwealth, 60 high schools earned this honor, and three of them have come from Stafford. So I'd like to invite Matt Nelson, Jean Welch, and Eddie Steenstra up, and congratulate them, as well as their students and parents, for earning such a wonderful honor. Congratulations.[801.12][801.12](Applause). And finally, I'm thrilled to recognize four of our five high schools. Brookpoint High School, Colonial Forge High School, Mountain View High School, and Stafford High School as a VMEA Blue Ribbon School recipient. Congratulations to the following directors, I'm going to invite them to come forward. From Brookpoint, Ron Bariclow, Stephen Shelburne, and Veronica Sutherland; from Colonial Forge, Matt Nelson, Barbara Perry, and Debbie Tripp; from Mountain View, Benita Keen, Brian Schmidt, and Jean Welch; and from Stafford High School, Jo Eveler, Eddie Steenstra, and Mandy Zietz. So for a school to earn the distinction of a Blue Ribbon, a VMEA Blue Ribbon School, the most advanced band choir and orchestra performances must receive superior ratings at their assessments in March. And it's kind of like that perfect storm. So, as you can see, we have a high level of expectation in musical excellence in our high schools, and we're very, very proud of our high school music programs. I would like to applaud these directors, their students, their parents, for the dedication and success of your students, and I would love everyone to join me in a round of applause for these programs.[882.00][882.00](Applause). Thank you so much.
It's wonderful what a talented Fine and Performing Arts program we have here in Stafford County. Next, I'd like to recognize Ann Emerson, School-to-Career Specialist, for presentation of awards.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening, everyone. I would once again like to recognize students who have earned a special distinction, winning a national-level award in the Career Development Poetry and Poster Contest. So I'd like to call these folks to come down. Esen, Max, Abigail, and Claire, and I'll go ahead and tell you what they've earned. Esen was a national tie for third place in intermediate poster. Max Hamilton was a third place in poetry intermediate level. Abigail Lane won second place in intermediate poster, and Claire Conway tied for second in high school poetry. Okay, guys. I have a piece of artwork that you guys did. I'd like to have a picture of you. Because I'm really proud of you, yeah, I'm really proud of you for, you know, the distinction you got, but what I think is really cool, and I want you to remember, okay, one, two, three, smile, and, okay, hold it down a little bit so it's not quite there. We want to see you smile, too. So what I want you guys to remember, though, if you want to relax for a moment, is how you felt when you first started creating, and how you might have when you started with the scissors, the construction paper, or the pen or pencil, been the way a lot of us are afraid of what people might think, whether it would turn out right. And what I want to say is, what I'm really proud of, is that you have kind of courage to create, and to take the risks of sharing with people how you felt, or what you aspire to. Our society needs people who are willing to be open, opening your heart, sharing your voice is a really great thing. So I hope you guys will do a lot more of it. Great work. And come over here.[1031.11][1031.11](Applause). presentation of awards.
Yes, we have a lot of friends today. Good evening, Madam Chairperson, school board members, and Dr. Benson. I am pleased to present several awards tonight for outstanding achievement in First in Mathematics. First in Math is an online program. Many of you guys have heard of it, from your students. But First in Math is an online program that we have in our elementary schools and middle schools, and it implores the developmental mathematics, it makes sure that students have an opportunity to rapidly increase their computational skills, their critical thinking and problem-solving, and other essential elements for success in mathematics. Students have the opportunity to log onto the program either at home or in school. We do provide them opportunities for that. To assist in the presentation, I would like to invite Brock Estes, our First in Math representative, who was here yesterday to join us at Wide Water Elementary School for a number of different awards we had to present over there. And we also had the inventor of First in Math, Bob Sun, actually came to visit one of our classrooms as well. First, I would like to call up to us is Wide Water Elementary School. The Assistant Principal for Wide Water, Ms. Nicole Clement, will be joining us. I would like to let everyone know that Wide Water has completed over 5 million problems solved within this program alone. Stafford County Public Schools has completed over 33 million problems, and Wide Water is one of our top achieving schools with 5 million problems solved. Thank you.[1215.33][1215.33](Applause). Next, we invite Dixon Smith Middle School. Principal, Mrs. Basiklia, and Math Specialist, Carolie Romano, please join us. Dixon Smith Middle School has completed over 2 million problems solved within this program.[1238.65][1238.65](Applause). Next, we have Shirley High Middle School. We ask that the principal, Mrs. Mary Grace McGrath, and also the math specialist, who's already up here, Mrs. Carolie Romano, join us up front. Shirley High Middle School has completed over 2 million problems, and they have not only brought their math specialist and their principal, but also the math department.[1280.15][1280.15](Laughter/Applause). We believe that in order to achieve these goals, it takes more than just one person, it takes an entire school. It takes the principal, the assistant principal, it takes everyone in order to make these things happen. So we greatly appreciate all of you coming. We have one special award to give.
Good afternoon, board. Before I do this, I know it's about the kids and the teachers and everything, but I've got to tell you, as a rep First in Math, I work with a lot of people, district math leadership across Virginia, Maryland, West Virginia, and DC, and they don't come any finer than Kenya Wallach, Mary Ann Johnson, just always conscientious, always trying to help think about the kids, and I'm just so privileged to be part of that. But would like to have a special award for Wide Water Elementary School as the number seven school in the country in First in Math, and there are lots, there are a million kids playing and whatever, very, very good. They're also number seven in parent participation, because there's a family-linked piece, and number three in fifth grade, and number two in second grade. So Wide Water just blew it out. We'd like to also welcome up Susan Whited and Assistant Principal Abby Martinez, I think it is, am I right? Representing Bob Freeman, the principal. And the interesting thing about First in Math is not only can the kids play, not only can the parents play, but the educators can play. The educators can open the site and review any game in and out of order, so they can show things that they haven't actually completed themselves in their play mode. But in their play mode, it's just like the kids. They get to open the games, and they get the challenge. And some people take it seriously, and have a lot of fun with it. And she, I think it's like 54,570 stickers as we speak, which is about 150,000 math problems that she's successfully solved, so congratulations on that.[1424.57][1424.57](Applause).
Thank you, guys.
Now, there's another component to First in Math. The next component of this is, this is the first time we've ever done this before, and that's a 24-game tournament. And I have Mary Ann Johnson here to talk to you guys a little bit about that, and to recognize some of our players.
The 24-game is what Bob Sun had also created before he did the, went to the online. And students have a card, and it has four digits on it, and the students have to find a way to make it total 24. You have to use all four numbers, and you can either add, subtract, multiply, or divide. The tournaments then get into speed rounds, and going into earning points. There's one dot, two dot, and three dots for difficulty levels. Two of our schools had tournaments. They held tournaments within many tournaments to get qualifying rounds. Students that made a certain amount of points, and that's how many cards you get in 20, 30-minute rounds, you total up your points. And then they had a tournament, both of the schools had 30 students that participated in the teams. Watching these students, I went to go help, and watching these students work, many of the students that we're pulling up today earned 30 to 70-plus points in a 20-minute round. There is speed, there's automaticity, they are catching those numbers and getting those solutions very, very quickly. And we would like to recognize the five students from Anthony Burns, and the four students that were the top teams from Falmouth Elementary. But I want to bring up Heidi Kendall and Elaine Smets, the math specialist, that put those things together for both of their schools, without them pulling it together and getting the proctors, so we'd like them to come up as well. I'm going to start with Anthony Burns, and if the students are here, we would like for them to come. The runner-up at Anthony Burns was Michael Sporel. Fourth-place winner was Keone Chong. Third-place winner was Michael Torres.[1573.83][1573.83](Applause). The second-place winner was Amber Livingston.[1582.15][1582.15](Applause). And the first-place winner was A.T.N. And with Anthony Burns, they competed third, fourth, and fifth grade, and we have third, fourth, and fifth grade represented on the top team. They are getting certificates. Mr. Sun actually signed a deck of 24 cards, so they have an autograph, and they're also getting the MVP players. I would like for you all to stay up here for just a moment. For Falmouth, we actually had a tie for third place. Annalise Ortiz-Lugo and Isabella Brenza were tied for third place. Second place was Logan Starks, and the first-place winner was Robert Calvert.[1638.65][1638.65](Applause). And to let you all see, this is going to be a little exciting for them, because they don't know that we're going to do this, but I need you all, as the students, to be able to see one of the screens. We have a 24-card that we're going to put up there. We would like for you all to try to play, and as you all go, don't call out the answer, but instead of doing your finger like you did in the tournament, raise your hand, okay? If you have a solution, when you get a solution, I want you to raise your hand.[1677.47][1677.47](Laughter). Watch how fast these kids are going to stick their hands up in the air. The goal is to make 24, use all four numbers once, add, subtract, multiply, and divide, and you're supposed to say the last step first, like eight times three is 24, and then explain what, how you got to that point. Are you guys ready? It's going to be up on the screen.[1706.24][1706.24](Laughter). Okay, Robert, what was one of the things that you came up with?
28 minus 4 equals 24. Seven times 4 equals 28. 2 plus 2 equals 4. 28 minus 4 equals 24.[1718.11][1718.11](Applause).
Did anybody get a different one? What was your solution?
4 minus 2 equals 24. 2 divided by 2 equals 1. 7 minus 2 equals 6. 6 times 2 equals 24.
There you go.[1731.11][1731.11](Applause). Thank you guys so very much. We have a deck of cards for 24 for you all as well. Yes. Okay.[1741.83][1741.83](Laughter). There you go.[1743.83][1743.83](Applause). Now, that was fun. I just want you all to see, between the First in Math and the 24, these students are learning their facts, they are going through, and the 24 tournaments really do make it a lot of fun for the kids. And next year, we're hoping to expand it, and then we hope to have a county-wide. Thank...[1765.91][1765.91](Laughter). Now, that was fun. I just want you all to see between the first in math and the 24. These students are learning their facts. They are going through, and the 24 tournaments really do make it a lot of fun for the kids. And next year, we're hoping to expand it. And then we hope to have a county-wide. Excellent. Thank you.
Hey, I'd just like to say, thanks, thanks so much. I have a third grader and a fourth grader who play, you know, this is a computer game for the folks who haven't, kind of zip by them. It's a computer game, so I have a third and fourth grader that love first in math, okay? They just absolutely love it. And so, when they get, you know, and I'm yelling at them, "Hey, what are you doing on the computer?" They say, "First in math." Oh, okay, go ahead. And so, it really is a very, I mean, it's just a great, it's just a great tool because their math skills have increased tremendously, just playing the first in math. They haven't played 24, but so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all. At this time, I'd like to recognize Dr. Susan Clark, Director of Student Services, and Rebecca Leggett, Supervisor of Parent Resource Center for Presentation of Awards.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Ms. Egan, Dr. Benson. About 10 years ago, we had an adaptive physical education teacher and a parent volunteer who basically started Special Olympics here in Stafford County Schools. The first team back then had 10 students, five volunteers, and our adaptive PE teacher. In 2006, we added basketball and soccer. And currently, our Stafford Titans Special Olympics team is represented by more than 175 students participating in three sports. Many, many student coaches who are students at our high schools and more volunteers than we can count throughout the division. This past March 18 and 19, we, as a school division, hosted the Special Olympics Basketball Championships that brought in more than 800 athletes from across the Commonwealth. And we were represented by students on two full-court teams, two half-court teams, and three skills athletes. We also had many high school students who volunteered, coached basketball and cheerleading, and played as unified players during the 2016 school year. We're going to see many more unified teams, which is basically an inclusive team. Right now, I'd like to introduce our Stafford Titans Scarlet Unified Team. They received a gold. Our athletes aren't here because these are our older guys and gals. They've all graduated. They're in their post-secondary world. But we do have some student coaches here, I believe, and the unified players. Felicia Preston, Ryan Davis, who I don't think is here. Tiger Behrens is not, and Tannen Caro is here. Thank you. Our Stafford Titans Green Team also brought home gold. Faith Falco and Stephen Falco were unable to be with us tonight. Antonio Sears, Andrew Martz, Emma Alley, Jensen Strater, Chase, 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 Strater, Jonathan Shell. And our student coach for the Stafford Titans Green Team is Shay Caro. Our Stafford Titans, one team brought home a silver. John Bailey, Andrew Martins, Jacob Palmer Tree. Jacob's here. And Brandon Beiler. Our Stafford Titans Two Team brought home bronze. Justin Jenkins, Jasmine Guillaume. And our Stafford Titans Skills Team, winning a bronze medal was Tyler Grog. William Grabber brought home gold. And Jace Coleman, also gold. Additional volunteers and coaches from Shirley High Middle School, Devon Caro, Devon Caro, Taylor Nickerson from Brookpoint High School, Brittany Miller, Gina Demala, Ashley Cole, and Amber Cole, all from Brookpoint High School. Did I miss anybody? Rebecca Leggett? Matthew is one of our graduates. We know Matthew so well because he works with us just about every day around here. So, thanks so much. Thanks so much.
Great job, everybody. Next, I'd like to recognize Dr. James Stempel, Principal of Mountain View High School, for Presentation of Awards. Oh, I see, it's going to be somebody else. It's going to be Miss. He didn't. Sorry. I was looking.
I'm just glad there's no 24th problem up there. All I'm really excited about.
No test.
Good, thanks. Except, good evening. I am both honored and excited to introduce Anne Hewitt, a senior at Mountain View High School. She is the 5A State Champion of Forensics and Impromptu Speaking. For this competition, students must select one of the topics presented, compose and deliver an amazing speech, all in seven minutes. In order to earn the opportunity to compete at the state level for the second year in a row, Anne also won the Conference 15 and Region 5A North competitions in her category. Anne excels in thinking and communicating quickly, efficiently, and effectively, as evidenced by her success on the forensics team and in our Model United Nations. Congratulations, Anne. Thank you. She might be at the band concert.
That's right. Next, I'd like to recognize Greg Daniel, Principal Colonial Forge High School, for Presentation of Awards.
Good evening, Madam Chair, School Board members, Dr. Benson. It is my pleasure to present a number of outstanding students and staff from Colonial Forge High School to you this evening. With the Virginia Governor's Finance Challenge students and teacher, Nancy Brandon, please come forward. Colonial Forge High School had a team of state finalists in the Virginia Governor's Finance Challenge. Our team's test scores were among the highest in the state, which qualified them to compete as state finalists. This year's team included the following students. Jacob Julian, Rebecca Hale, Trevor Mushong, who's with us this evening, and Trinity Sis. At this time, please join me congratulating these students on an outstanding accomplishment. Next, with the Technology Student Association members and sponsor Nate Nadle, please come forward. On May 6 through the 8th, nine members of Colonial Forge High School Technology Student Associations competed in the 2016 Virginia TSA State Competition held in Richmond. In total, two teams were top-10 finalists in their competition events. The team of, the team for Engineering Design included a team of Sierra Espolin, Rafael Mas, and Jacob Bailey. And Jacob Bailey was also recognized this evening for honor course. The team for Webmaster Design included a team of Devlin Bushta, Alexander Chuang, and Tariq Dodoo. These students qualified to go to the national competition this summer. And would you please join me congratulating these students on an outstanding accomplishment? Next, with Brian Ricks and the instructor Catherine Thompson, please come forward. Bryant was one of 45 students across the state who was selected to attend the Governor Latin's Academy. It is a three-week residential program where students had to submit essays, write a letter of recommendation, and also take an achievement test. Bryant's accomplishment earned him this position in participating in this prestigious, outstanding program sponsored by the Governor of Virginia Latin Academy. At this time, please join me in congratulating Bryant on an outstanding accomplishment.
Thank you very much and congratulations to all our award winners, both our students and our staff. It's always wonderful at the end of the year to come and hear all the great things going on in our schools. Moving on, we will be inviting Mr. Haran forward for a staff report about the rebuild of Stafford High School Phase II and III schedule.
Good evening, Board, Dr. Benson, Chairman. I understand the Board wanted to update on Stafford High School potential delays due to the weather. So, I'm here to answer any questions. But essentially, the last six weeks have impacted all of our construction projects. Brookpoint, Colonial Forge, as well as Stafford High School. Anything, any work that was being done outside, the weather made it very difficult to make any significant progress during that period of time. As I mentioned in the staff report that Dr. Benson provided you guys, all the projects are still scheduled to be completed this summer. And we're still confident that that will occur. However, it's made it a little bit more difficult because of the weather. And if we continue to have weather delays similar to what we've encountered in the last six weeks, we certainly will be impacted into the school year next year on the projects. How much, I can't tell you at this point in time. But I would suspect it would be more of the outside work, specifically the parking lot and the fields at Stafford High School. Again, if we have significant weather patterns like we've had the last six weeks, it will impact us. And there will be some type of impact in late August, September. I don't suspect we'll have the same issues associated with the additions at Brookpoint and Colonial Forge because most of the outside work is now coming to fruition. And so, the majority of the work is inside the additions and breaking through to the existing school over the summer and getting that work. So, I'm not as worried with the additions as I am with the exterior work. Any questions?
Either one?
Yeah, to start with. The, you know, I've been out to Stafford High School. Obviously, they're getting the land graded, et cetera. The rain obviously slowed that down an awful lot. Now, what you just said kind of stumped my question, this problem, is that you don't know how far into the school year it might impact. Has there been any schedule update on, is that, what's our level of confidence? The parking lot and the roads are going to be complete by the start of the school year? The fields are fine, but the follow-up to that or part of that is, does the field construction impact the parking lot and road construction at all? In other words, do the fields have to start construction, be finished before the roads are truly finished?
No. So, I'll answer that question first. No. So, as I said, it's very weather-dependent. If we have anything like what we occurred in the last six weeks, if that pattern persists throughout the summer, we're not only this project, but any other project that we have exterior will be impacted. It's very hard for me to give you some definitive answers associated with that when that's a variable I have no control over and don't know. If we have what we would consider a normal summer and not wet and not anything similar to what we've experienced in the last six weeks, I'm confident that we'll have the parking lot in, finished, the roads in, finished, the fields in, finished, along with the tennis courts.
Like, well within time, the parking lot's down?
It's going to be, it's going to be, no, we're going to be into August. We'll be working, finishing those things in August. But again, I'm confident when the students, the teachers, they come back first, and the students will have those completed. Again, if we have what I would term a reasonable summer weather pattern, you know?
And then delays of the building rebuild, the roads, and et cetera, does that impact any other projects like the track in particular?
Negative, yes, sir. Again, but the track is outdoor.
Right.
And we'll be doing some asphalt work along with asphalt in a lot of the other schools.
But there's no resource dependency on the track coming off the school?
No, negative. That's correct, sir.
Mr. McCaskin?
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Hirons. Answered some of my questions. Mr. Haran, the, are you guys having, how does it work? Do you guys have like weekly meetings with the contractor?
Well, we have biweekly, every other week, bi-monthly, every other week, progress meetings. And we met last week with a contractor. And he was confident, again, if we don't have, you know, a unique summer weather pattern, he'll be finished.
So, this is coming from the contractor?
Yes, yes, sir, absolutely.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that you were, we were kind of talking, right?
We are. We talk all the time.
And then, so, okay, so the construction, I really don't have any, well, one thing is that if we do get into a jam with the weather, you will please come back to everyone and just kind of give us...
I'll keep the board appraised.
So, we can come up with a mitigation strategy and...
As we progress through the summer. I think, remember, regardless of the weather impacts, majority, if not all of it, even if we have poor weather, the majority of the parking lot is going to be done.
Okay.
You know, so it's not going to be like we don't have anything out there. I'm very confident that we'll have. I just wanted to make sure the board was aware. I think it was intuitive that you would understand that with the weather patterns that we've had and the weather conditions, that anything outside, any construction outside has been impacted.
Okay, so just as long as, I guess, we, you know, we come back and give us a briefing on every couple of months, every two months or so.
I'll give you an impact, I mean, an update the end of June, and I'll give you an update the end of July at the board meeting, since we have one in July. And I'll make sure I do that. We'll get it on the agenda, so we, any concerns you might have, and I can pass on it.
And then we have the $500,000 question.
Yes, sir.
Do you know what that question may be, Mr. Haran?
I do, in fact, know what that question is.
Well, you know what? You're pretty good.
And the contract is still open, and we have not addressed that. We have not gone into any depth. I'm sure, as I told the Board previously, that it is my, we will assess in consultation with the Board. We'll assess some potential LDs to the contractor associated with the delay of building of Phase I. And the contractor will take whatever appropriate action they feel. And I, it's my opinion that this will be, this will, we'll end up in court litigating this.
And, you know, so that's the question, I guess, the eventual question, Dr. Benson, is, you know, if this is looking like court now, I mean, is it court now or court later? So, that's something that we have to address sooner or later. Let's not get it, you know? Whatever we think is, whatever we think is the most prudent thing and the most advantageous thing that we can do for the school division, of course, because we want that $500,000, because a lot of people were, you know, put out pretty, it was a...
And we still have it.
Yeah.
As I told the Board, you know, we have that in retainage. And I think it's prudent that the school division complete the project.
Of course, I totally understand.
And then we address all the additional items. They've been, the contractor's been formally notified.
Okay.
We've gone through all the proper procedures to put them on notice.
Okay.
So, I want to make sure the Board feels comfortable that all those things are postured and positioned for any action that the Board chooses to take.
Right, I just didn't want to, okay. Right. I just didn't want to, okay, got it, and I didn't want to come, I just wanted to make sure that, so they're on official notice and, and then, of course, we want to, we want you to come back, Dr. Benson, at least I want you to come back and talk to us about that, whether it's, you know, offline, or, I mean, closed session if we have to, because it's, because it's a legal matter or, or whatever, I don't know. Okay, thanks.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Kidby, did you have a question?
Just very quickly, at what point do you put together specific contingency plans, or have you already?
Four.
If, if we go into September and we still don't have roads or fields or those kinds of things?
I suspect this June, latter part of June, if we, if we feel that we are in a position where we may not be completed, we'll go ahead and start doing it.
And that will be in concert with the, with the school administration?
Oh, yes, ma'am, absolutely. Absolutely. Yes, ma'am.
Any other comments? I just have one probably in that regard. When we start doing the contingency plans, it's going to be very critical how we communicate to our community, where the parking, all that stuff, especially as we get towards those big events, ninth grade orientation. I'll be doing that, not at that school, but all those things, just making sure that we're thinking ahead on how we're going to communicate.
Yes, ma'am.
I know, where, but we just?
I just want to make sure the Board, from my perspective, it's my opinion that I think we're going to be okay. But I just wanted to make sure, I just wanted to make sure that the Board was aware that the, the weather has impacted us across the board, so. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you for briefing us. Our next item will be a special presentation that'll be from, a report from our Finance and Budget Committee, and I will turn that over to Mr. Hirons, the Chair.
We asked for a few minutes here just to update the Board. We had a Fab meeting last week, last Tuesday, I believe. And in that meeting, it was post a meeting that our Chair and Vice Chair had with the Board of Supervisors Chair and Vice Chair. As you probably know, the, the Board of Supervisors is still asking for a joint audit or joint CAFR. And we are still not exactly clear on what that means as opposed to what we do currently. So we asked staff, Mr. Fulmer, to give us some, a, a summation on what a joint CAFR in their terms means compared to what we currently do. What Mr. Fulmer reported to us was, because we're a component of Stafford County, because Stafford County Public Schools is a component of Stafford County, our audit and our financial documents are already included within the county's CAFR. And we essentially, and it also helps that we use the same vendor, so they already do the work that they would do under what we believe the Board of Supervisors is asking for a joint CAFR. We essentially already do a joint CAFR, it just happens to not be called that right now. And if the Board of Supervisors, you know, we're a little bit confused on what they're asking, if they're asking us not to do our own audit and do our, our own contract and our letters of engagement. Our concern, the concern of the Fab was that, well, that's going to reduce transparency of, of the Stafford County Public Schools' financial records. Obviously, that's not the direction we want to go right now. So we are going to draft a letter and send it, send a letter to their Chair. Chair of the Board of Supervisors essentially saying that, that the Fab met, they heard the request. We don't have a specific recommendation for the Board of Supervisors because we still are unclear of what you're asking for as compared to what we currently do. But the Fab wanted to bring this to the attention of the entire Board, so you guys are aware. Yes?
Just very quickly, there were a comparison that was done with some of our like divisions at the Board of Supervisors. I believe had their staff do, and it, and it spoke to joint CAFRs. And in several of those divisions, what they're calling a joint CAFR is, in fact, the very thing that we do. We drop our, our financial statements into the financial statements, the audited financial statements of the county, therefore creating a CAFR that represents both the, the component unit, which is the schools, as well as the full county. So there may be some confusion just in terms of the definition, so I'm glad that we're asking for clarification on that.
Yes, Ms. He.
I wonder whether we should not have this communication with the Board of Supervisors come from our Chair, either go from our Fab to their Fab, or our Chair to their Chair, because I'm, I'm not sure that it's quite the, you know, the, the lines aren't as straight if our committee is writing to the supervisors. I, I have no objection for, you know, that communicate to come from our Chairman to the Chairman of the Board of Supervisors.
Yeah, the only path we're ever taking on that is because the Fab itself didn't make, isn't making a recommendation to the Board, to the school, to the full school board based off what the Board of Supervisors has asked. So it was kind of stuck in committee, essentially. But if, if that's the way that, it, it does make sense, I, I don't disagree with it, and that's the way we should go, we can go.
I'm just trying to keep, keep those lines clear. Or perhaps it's something that our Fab could communicate with their Fab and ask for a meeting with them, or, or send it forward. But I think the important message to get across is that there is no objection at this point. We, you know, we're, we're open, but we need to know exactly what it is we're being asked to consider. And, and make the point that you and Mrs. Kidby just made, that we're already, you know, doing things that these other communities that, you know, on paper have the joint CAFR are, are exactly what they're doing as well.
And within the letter, we're also asking for a joint meeting of the Fab, along with a re-engagement of, of the Joint Working Group. During the Board of Supervisors' last meeting, they did direct their County Administrator to, to engage and, and set a meeting of the Joint Working Group between the Board, Supervisor School Board, the three-on-three. We have yet to receive an invite from them, I'm, I'm assuming you have not heard from them at all, as well as a joint Fab Committee. We need to have these conversations that have not occurred in well over a year in a joint fashion.
Any further comment? Any further comments? Okay, thank you, Mr. Hirons. Next, we will move on to citizens' comments. Individuals wishing to comment at this time may do so by responding to the general invitation by the Chair. Speakers shall identify themselves by name, address, and organizational affiliation if the spokesperson represents an organization. Speakers shall also announce the purpose or topic of their comments. Three minutes shall be allotted to speakers. The Chairman reserves the right to restrict the total citizen comment received at any particular meeting to a predetermined maximum number of minutes with the approval of the Board. Citizen comment, which is profane, abusive, or which threatens imminent physical harm, shall be ruled out of order by the Chairman. Although the Board provides the opportunity for citizen comment, individuals desiring to register complaints against division employees or division programs, services, or activities may also utilize the procedures outlined in Policy 1113, Public Complaints. I have one person who has signed in, Ms. Laura Sullivan, and she can be first, and then anybody who also wishes to speak. Or you may work out your time, but I have Ms. Laura Sullivan on here first. If there are additional speakers, please line up behind and then just come one by one. If you have not signed in, if you will sign in on the clipboard, that should be to your, you know how bad I am? Left, their left. Okay, all right, or right, whichever, and if you'll just sign in. And so I will open, I will open public comment at this time.
Okay. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the Board, and Dr. Benson. So we are all here tonight to ask you to consider and approve the naming of the softball field at Rodney Thompson Middle School after Vicky Johnson, our beloved administrative assistant who passed away this spring. Ms. Johnson was a career employee in Stafford County devoting her life to the service of students. As a bus driver paraprofessional, and finally, as an administrative assistant, Ms. Johnson was the life of our school. Many of you have visited Thompson over the years, and you've witnessed for yourselves the energy and passion she showed to everyone who walked through those doors. As a coach both for softball and field hockey, she made lasting connections with students. She was a role model and a friend. Students could count on her and loved her. In short, she was the epitome of an educator. For me personally, I'm finishing my seventh year at Thompson Middle School. Ms. Johnson was the first person my young children, then ages three and five, met when they came to work with me. Over the years, she helped my children and looked out for them. When my daughter entered sixth grade last year, she would always go to Ms. Johnson, and not me ironically, if she needed something. Ms. Johnson was always there to help. That's how she was with everyone's child, she was always there to help. She believed in and loved our school and our school community, and she had great pride in everything Rodney Thompson Middle School. In her honor, we request that you name the softball field after Vicky Johnson. Thank you.
Thank you.
Probably should have gone first, actually. Okay. So I am Laura Sullivan, I'm an Assistant Principal at Brookpoint High School, a citizen of Stafford and a former coach and teacher at Rodney Thompson Middle School. Again, I'm here to speak to the agenda item referencing the dedication of Rodney Thompson Softball Field. When examining the reasons for dedicating a field to, the Board has the responsibility to determine if the coach leaves behind a legacy that we can support. I'm here tonight to confirm for you that Vicky Johnson is that coach. Vicky not only trained our student athletes in the skills of the sport she coached, but she mentored our young girls in the areas of work ethic, commitment, and integrity. I was fortunate enough to coach both field hockey and softball with Vicky during my five years as a teacher at Thompson. Not only did she coach our athletes, but she coached me and every other teacher that worked with her on the field of play. Starting out, I was a young coach, only focused on creating a roster of our best athletes and honing their skills to win middle school championships. However, it was Vicky's wisdom and heart that made me realize the job was so much more important than that. You see, each year before tryouts, Vicky and I would decide together that for softball, twelve was the magic number. Twelve was the amount of players that we could keep on the roster to ensure that we had enough players in the case of injury, but that would get us through the season without having to bench players for the majority of the game. However, on the last day of tryouts, we spent several hours looking over the skills of our players. And if you look back at our rosters, every year we had thirteen. The thirteenth was Vicky's project. It was always the athlete that needed the team more than the team needed the athlete. Sorry. It was always the athlete that needed the team more than the team needed the athlete. The thirteenth was the student that struggled to connect in relationships to peers and adults. Sometimes had minor discipline infractions or who struggled academically. But Vicky saw something that was in them that was coachable. Each season, Vicky proved herself to be the most valuable coach, not because of the technique that she taught our softball players, but because of her ability to see the potential in kids that everyone else failed to connect with. Those girls were successful because she saw success in them. I ask that you please consider my recommendation in honoring Vicky and allowing her legacy to remain by dedicating the field in her name.
Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Angela Harding. I'm a teacher at Rodney Thompson, also the Athletic Director at Rodney Thompson. Sorry. As you can tell, Vicky Johnson was a, a big part of Rodney Thompson. I just want to kind of sum up what Dr. Greider and Laura said. You know, Vicky was a huge part of, of Thompson, and this year, we finally got our softball field. We finally got our fence and everything up this year, and she was so excited to, you know, have a spring and play in the softball field, although we've only had several games because of the weather. But unfortunately, you know, she wasn't there to, to be a part of it. Our current softball coach, Mr. Pollak, Coach Pollak, couldn't be here this evening, but, you know, he wrote a couple of little things to say, you know, that she just took great pride in making sure that all the players were, are positive role models, both on the field and in the classroom. She also makes certain that, that the head coaches are prepared with all the ins and outs and that go along with managing the team. She also treats everyone with dignity and class, and she also made sure that our field looked the best that it could before every game. And again, it would just be an honor if y'all would approve that if the field could be, if you would approve that the field would be named in honor of her, because again, she was Rodney Thompson. Thank you.
Thank you.
And we're just all here supporting.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Jeffrey Trigger, and I live at 518 Clint Lane. Tonight, I would like to discuss about the current situation with contracts. A contract scale advertised and promoted as correct was given to the public and to employees explaining what educators were going to receive in compensation. Unfortunately, there was a mistake to the scale, and a new scale was created, and contracts were sent out based on the new scale unknown to staff, school board members, and the Superintendent. This has caused increased frustration within employees, and once again, teachers are told to be, make, are told to make a sacrifice just in case others might not get the money. Let me just stop and point out how frustrated I am at the thought of pitting employees against other employees. This is beyond angering, it's borderline unethical. All employees should be rewarded for their work, as well as rewarded for loyalty. Let's not try to divide our employees over a mistake they had no part in creating. Another issue is that the county has to tackle is trust. A successful organization, no matter sport, business, education, can be successful if leadership cannot be trusted. When the new pay model was implemented, the Board and the Superintendent sent forth a plan to compensate employees in a manner more appropriate to the cost of living in the ninth wealthiest county in the country. We were also abandoning the old step model, we were told, did not work and was too expensive. However, the county found $8.3 million over the summer, which hurt trust between employees and the county. Then we discovered an additional $6.9 million salary cap and money this year. And now we are hearing that we can't pay the teachers without sacrificing pay to ESP and bus drivers. How can we believe this to be true when the most of our recent sacrifices, such as fifty-five teaching positions, were unnecessary? Let's focus on bringing the trust back within the county and pay the employees what was promised.
Is there anybody else who would like to address the Board? Okay, seeing none, I will close. Public comment. Next, we will move to Superintendent's comments.
No comments this evening, Madam Chair.
Moving on to consent, consent items, do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Moving on to action items. First one, to nominate and approve a school board representative to the Head Start Policy Council. I know that we had spoken about that, that position has been made vacant. I am willing to serve in that, but I would like to have a backup or alternate to be able to attend meetings, just in case. Is there anybody who could?
I think I'm an alternate already, aren't I?
Yes.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, then would you?
Yes, my name can remain on there, son, you'd never need me.
Now there's a volunteer.
I feel so horrible about not being able to make their meetings, it's such a worthy cause and worthy Board to have our impact on, but their meeting times is difficult.
I believe we will need a motion to approve myself and Mr. Hirons, I believe.
Second?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any further, any further discussion? All those?
Both?
I should have said, if there was anybody else who wanted to?
That's right.
Place their name.
I don't know, we've already made the motion now.
And, and I won't entertain a amendment to that motion at this point. At least not from one of the volunteers.
All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right, moving on to 12.02, discuss and approve the FY 2017 Teachers' Salary Scale. Dr. Benson, will you be?
Madam Chair, the, the Board asked that we take a look at what the cost would be to implement the scale that was included in our work in March, which is identified as the approved scale versus the adopted scale, which was the, the work that we did at the end of the budget process and the amount that the teacher contracts were, were based upon. And so we had staff and finance go through and do a fairly detailed look at what the differential will be, and that is in the agenda item for the Board's consideration. The increase in gross salaries would cost an approximately $1.7 million, plus our, the employee portion of the benefits, a little over $400,000, bringing us to approximately $2.2 million in order to implement the other scale, the one that the contracts were not based upon. in order to implement the other scale, the one that the contracts were not based upon. The board also asked us to take a look at what potential sources of funding there might be. I have a sheet I want to pass around for the board's consideration. The strategy that we've taken to look at available funds is to look at the potential to buy ahead with additional savings that may be available in this current year or a potential deferral of some of these purchases. The board's direction was to not focus on staffing reduction anywhere in the division, so we really looked at things that we were buying, capital purchases as an example. So in front of the board, we've identified approximately $600,000 in potential buy aheads in operations, as well as $460,000 in technology, computer replacement cycle essentially. And in the regular budget, we, for FY 17, we included seven mainstream passenger buses and three special needs buses. So that's just over $900,000. That brings the total to about $1.99 million in potential buy heads or deferrals. I would note that a couple of these items, particularly the technology and the finance, are part of our replacement cycle funds, and that if the board should choose to move in this direction, that those accounts would be reduced significantly and that the board would be challenged, I think, with restoration of some of those funds in the next budget process. So we, again, we brought two additional pieces of information to the board for their consideration, what we project as the additional funds needed to pass along, which essentially is an additional 2% increase for anyone who's on a teacher contract. We've identified that amount as approximately $2.2 million. We are presenting the board with a potential, potential buy head or deferral of $1.99 million in purchases that we could consider as a manner to offset. But then again, it's going to present some challenges for us.
Are there any further questions for Dr. Benson?
Can you describe or have a finance describe? How was that 2.2 calculated? Was that based off of real people? Is that estimates?
We'll get Mr. Fulmer to address that.
You nailed it. It was based on actual people. We took, every teacher offered a contract this year, took the contract rate that was approved versus the contract rate that was adopted, came up with a number, added the benefits percentage to that. In addition, we also had to include the budgeted amount for the additional positions that we have for next year that, obviously, those contracts have not gone out yet, but we have to assume that we're filling those positions.
And with regards to those real people, it's based on real salaries, right?
Absolutely.
It's not a, an estimate. So we're not estimating a mid-range figure when we?
No, it was based on exactly where they fall on the scale. Both of the scales took the difference of those two scales.
So that 2.2 is pretty high confidence. That's the actual figure. That's the actual cost that it's going to, we're going to be writing checks for next year.
Very high confidence.
Ms. Egan.
Chris, what does this do to future budgets going down the line and also taking into consideration that we're looking to do salary enhancements again next year? We're looking to do perhaps another COLA at some point. Where does this leave us next year or the year after and the year after that? Especially if the board of supervisors says you guys are going to get levelly funded. We're not going to give you any more money.
Right. Well, as soon as we start pulling money from next year's budget and trying to satisfy or use it this year, basically, you're starting in the hole by that amount next year. You're going to have to cover that or replenish it to cover the salaries, kind of like we are this year. And then anything in addition to that, you'd have to find the additional funding for. Does that cover your question?
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hirons, Mr. Hirons and Ms. Egan. Mr. Fulmer, so, so we had the $8.3 million excess, and then we had a $6.9 million excess for this year. Is that correct?
Correct.
Not for this year? Oh, okay. Okay. So how much of that was salary lapse last year?
The, of the 8.3, predominantly, all of the 8.3 was salary lapse.
And how much was salary lapse the year before that?
I don't have the hard numbers in front of me.
I mean, can you, was it 10? Was it four?
It was, I couldn't even tell you. We did the initial analysis several months ago, but I haven't looked at it recently.
But it was probably, probably, would a wise and prudent person say 4 million?
Yes.
I don't think it's fair to ask him to give a number that he doesn't have. At this point, we don't even know, because that's part of what the audit's looking at. We don't know what was reallocated or what may have been. I think we ought to go with what we know, which is last year and the projected for this year.
So, okay, thank you. So what is the projected for this year?
The projected savings overall is what has been presented to you already.
Salary lapse?
Correct. That includes part of the salary lapse. We won't have a hard number until we get closer to the end of the year.
So 8.3 last year, and so, say that again, I wasn't paying attention. Did you say, so how much was it this year? What's the projected?
Well, the projected right now is what has been presented to you at the work session that you guys came against. Do you have the hard?
We had. It was approximately seven. The board obligated the majority of that. There will be some additional as we move toward the end of the year. We'd like to get a June, into June, to figure out what that additional savings might be. There will likely be some more. We need to make sure that we're spot on on that number, though. As I told the board, we'll be paying bills into July. We don't want to come close to redlining. One of the challenges is that when you talk about numbers of this magnitude, you know, it has the million attached to it, but you're also talking about what is essentially getting down to 1% to 2% of a $265 million budget. So it's not the same as, you know, balancing a checkbook for, you know, household. We need to make sure that we remain, that we remain solvent. What we have promised to the board is that as those resources become known to us and we're more certain about the, what the number's going to be, that the board would be in the position to determine how the resources would be used. And that's not something that's happened in previous years. We also have savings not only due to salary lapse, but operational savings as well. And that has happened every year in previous years that have, those monies have been redirected, even though what has been, received the most attention has been the salary, the salary lapse and its redistribution. But there are savings operationally as well. And one of the things that we spoke to the board about is the savings in utility and fuel costs, which are rolled up in what the board committed a little bit earlier this year.
Okay. Well, thank you. That clears it up a little bit. So we have 8.3 million, then we have close to 7 million. So what's to say that the year after that won't be 7 million?
Mr. McCosker, I think that maybe the best way to think about this is that we're on a curve, or have been on a curve for five, five years, okay? And that amount has been, has been increasing as one year's budget was built upon the previous year's budget. We're on the downside of that curve now. The available funds that we have in this year is less total than what we had available last year. Next year's will be smaller than that. I think if the board, if we could get to the point where what we're looking at is a 1%, 1.5%, no more than 2% carry forward at the end of the year or a redistribution, then we would be doing a pretty good job of managing our resources.
So that's the exact, that's exactly where I'm going. So, you know, we had, we had an 8.3, and then we, we had a 7. And let's say we do great, and we have a 5, right? Let's just say. It sounds reasonable. It sounds prudent. That'll be 5. Maybe it'll be 4.5. So what's the problem with funding the teachers' scale? Front the money, and we'll pay for it in salary lapse, and we'll put it, we'll pay down now for next year. And then next year, we'll take it into consideration, hey, folks, we gave you this percentage last year. Let's focus on paraprofessionals even more. And let's be, there's only one person on the board, I believe, said something about taking paraprofessionals and bus drivers' pay, and it wasn't me. We actually put out, we're not going to take anybody's pay. It was going to be a one-time money. So, so anyway, so back to the 4.5 projected the year after. So what's the, I don't see why we can't take this 1.9 or 2 million that we've come up with in one-time savings and pay down now. Pay it down now. Honor the contract. Honor the contract, and you'll have 4.5. I mean, let's, a wise and prudent person would say that history is going to show us that we're going to have at least $4.5 million in salary lapse the year after.
Madam Chair.
If we're on, if we're on this curve. So, I'm not finished, Madam Chair. So, so, so honor the contracts, come up with the $2 million for the teachers, everyone else still gets their pay raises with this plan, and do the right thing. Mr. Harris?
I just want some clarity, because we were told throughout the budget process, the surplus is most likely going to be less, not only because we're on this downward slope, but because this year's budget, the best we could, was developed on actual expenditure, actual salaries, correct?
FY 17.
Right.
Correct.
Right. So FY 17 surplus?
FY 17, we projected FY 17 will be close, as close as we have ever been, and I'm not sure how many years.
Right. And it shouldn't necessarily, it's, I think it's difficult to compare that to years past because it's, we developed it differently than we did years past. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. I don't mean to be argumentative. I just want to make sure we, we understand, because we heard those presentations over and over again over the last several months of how this year's budget was different. We presented that to the board supervisor specifically within the superintendent's funding request of how it was developed differently. So I get, I get it, Mr. McCosker, and I don't disagree. I don't want to disagree.
Everybody has a view.
I'm not sure, you know, that that's a little bit of a scary proposition, because, you know, it is hoped to a certain extent, because we don't know that we're going to be closer. And, you know, as Dr. Benson described a curve, you know, I don't know if it's a curve or it's a cliff, and next year is way down here. It's just, it's the unknowns that scare me.
Ms. Kidby.
Yes, just in that regard, we did increase our operating budget in terms of expenditures by approximately $15 million this year. $32,000 of that was additional operating funding from the local government. About $6 million, I believe, came from the state, additional funding from the state, which means that over $8 million was found internally for us to be able to hire additional teachers that we needed, particularly in the special ed arena. So we did delve into our surplus significantly this year as we built the budget, as Dr. Benson indicated, not only from salary lapse, but also from other operational expenditures by doing a very clean sweep of accounts where monies had not historically been spent out according to budget. So I'm just trying to help us get a picture of how the budget was created. This $2 million number is a bigger number than, it doesn't surprise me. I thought it was going to be 2 million. When I was talking about it, I thought it was going to be 2 million. But it is a bigger number than I had hoped for. So it makes it more difficult to make these decisions.
Any other comment at this time or questions? Ms. Healy.
Dr. Benson, do you have a projection as to what you anticipate the lapse may be next
I do not, Ms. Healy. And part of that is that we did build the budget in a different manner, and we have, don't have, have not been able to take advantage of a very sophisticated tool in order to be able to do those projections. Next year, we'll be building our first budget inside of our new financial management system, and that will give us a better ability to project forward what potential savings might be. We will have turnover. We have turnover every year. There will be salary lapse. How close did we call it on things like utilities and other areas? There's some volatility there potentially. Like I said, I would be comfortable with us ending a school year that had 1%, 1.5% of savings moving toward the end of the year that the board could consider how to use as one-time funds. And when you're talking about a $265 million budget, yeah, you're, it's just, it's got, you know, it's got that $1 million attached to it. And that's what, folks, look at that and say, that's a lot. But given the size of our payroll and such, it's not a lot of flexibility if we encounter any challenges next year. We shared with the board, I think, an article that suggested that there may be some challenge potentially with state revenue. We've not confirmed that. But, you know, if we were to have any shortfall beyond what we projected in revenue, that could create, you know, additional issues for us. We want to make sure that we're, we're close, right? But at the same time, we don't want, we also want to make sure that we don't end up having to ask the supervisors for additional resources in order to stay in the black for the coming year.
Dr., if I could speak to, I know that I'm the one that sort of floated the article, but about the soft revenue projections from the state, I did, and of course, this board remembers that every year, we have a 5% holdback from the county in case they don't make revenue projections as well. That every year is part of our budget and every division in the, in the county. Conversations that I had, I did make some phone calls to Richmond about the, those numbers, and the people that I talked to said they do not believe we are going to meet those projections. Now, whether that will impact the funding to schools about the 2%, that goes into effect in December, there was some disagreement, but there was pretty unanimous agreement that there would be potentially a hold or a wait on that funding, and that gives me great pause, and that's why I did share that article. But I did make some calls to the finance folks down in Richmond to confirm, and what they were projecting did not seem like we were going, they were going to make those projections. So I'd like to share that with the board, which gives me great concern. All right. Is there?
I have a question. No, I have a comment. If we were to make the adjustment at mid-year, am I right in assuming this number would be cut in half? Thank you.
All right. Is there a motion on the table concerning this issue?
Madam Chair, I move that the Stafford County School Board ratify the employment contracts that were prepared in accordance with the corrected pay scale and distributed on or about May 10, 2016.
Do I have a second, even for discussion?
I'm sorry, Madam Chair. I believe the board needs to formally approve the scale and ratify the contracts that were previously distributed.
Okay, so the, well, we'll need a second in any case.
Second for a discussion.
And do you take the amendment that the, I'm sorry, you said that the scale itself would need to be approved as well?
The scale that was included in the adopted budget and the contracts that were just, and ratify the contracts that were distributed on or about May 10.
Right.
Adoption of the scales that were published in May.
Madam Chair, I'd like to offer a sub-motion. We figure out the main motion first.
Okay.
Madam Chair, just to ensure that we don't have any confusion about the scale that is the board is approving, is, because we've had conversation about and discussion of the approved versus the adopted. We want to be clear that what we're approving is the scale that was included in the board's adopted budget, and that we are ratifying the contracts that were distributed on or about May 10.
Just change the motion to say adopted pay scale. Correct?
It was included in the adopted budget, correct?
It was included in the adopted budget.
I'm sorry, Madam-
I'm sorry, Madam Clerk, you're going to have to read that because I'm, I'm not following it myself.
I, I thought part of the problem was that the scales weren't exactly in there. The scales were in the approved budget, but they weren't in the adopted budget, and that was the cause of confusion. That, that was my understanding.
Right.
If the board would take a look at the attachment that's in the agenda item.
If I may, Madam Chair?
Yes.
My understanding was that we, when we adopted our budget, we adopted a resolution which reflected a number, and that number was the total budgeted number. This particular scale that Dr. Benson has just asked us to look at, and that is considered part of the adopted budget, reflects that entire budget figure that was in the resolution. We didn't actually get the new budget books that evening, I don't believe.
We did not.
I believe we got them the next day or two after that. I, I don't know exactly when we got them, but we didn't get them that evening. So, it, we, we very easily, as board members, would have assumed that the pay scale was the same pay scale as was in the adopted budget. However, the number, the total budgeted number, does not reflect that scale that was in the approved budget. It reflects this scale that's in front of us now, which is the, the scale that's been changed unbeknownst to Dr. Benson or this board.
Okay. Is that correct? Super Clerk, strike me out.
Okay. Do we know?
Reread it?
Sure.
All right, I'm going to start again. Madam Chair, motion to approve the fiscal year 2017 teacher's salary scale in the adopted budget and ratify contracts.
I think she wants you to say that the board will ratify, hereby ratifies the contracts that were provided to the teachers or people on the teacher pay scale earlier this month.
Right. I thought these were two separate motions.
Yeah, but don't do the ratify contracts. Do the first one until you get to ratify contracts. Okay. The first issue we have to address is the pay scale. Is it the pay scale that was approved, which has an additional 2% for the people on the teachers?
Correct. Oh, okay.
Pay scale, or is it the, the teacher pay scale that has the 1% VRS and the 2% increase as every, what other employee is receiving? The issue is whether the teachers will get 2% over and above what everyone else is getting in terms of a pay increase. And the, the difference is the extra 2% is in what we approved, although I don't think we consciously approved treating the teachers any differently than anyone else. It just happened to be in that scale. Or what was in the adopted budget in terms of the overall dollars that it costs, which would be, everybody gets treated the same, 1% VRS plus 2% plus the enhancement for...
Salary enhancement, 0 to 13.
Zero to whatever.
Right.
And Madam Chair, I have an amendment to the motion.
Okay. Okay, we have to get, let me get through these first.
Actually, let me ask Mr. Nelson, would this be better to be two motions or one motion? Mr. Hyrens?
There was a second for discussion.
But now we have a new first, or a revision.
Which will be seconded for discussion.
Okay. All right. So, it's going to be one motion and you would...
Well, I, I actually, I think we ought to just deal with the pay scale and then deal with the contracts, because if the pay scale changes, we won't...
It's going to feed into the contracts.
Be ratifying the contracts, there'll be new contracts. So, let's just deal with the pay scale first, and then the contracts are going to be the easy part, really, once we get through the pay scale.
We do not have any buttons up here? Let me try, let me try this one more time.
We'll do the pay scale.
And then I give up. Madam Chair, I motion to approve the fiscal year 2017 teacher's salary, teachers' salary scale in the adopted budget.
Second for discussion.
Okay. All right. We now have a motion on the table that has been moved and seconded.
And I have an amended motion to, Madam Chair, and that is to adopt the original pay scale as presented in the superintendent's recommended budget.
I'll second that for discussion.
Okay, so we have on the table to adopt the origi, the pay scale, the pay scale that is not reflected in the contract but was reflected in the, in the March, I think it's the March 8th document. Is that correct?
In what the board approved.
Right.
Correct?
Well, right.
Okay, is there a discussion?
Madam Chair, once again, well, first of all, Madam Chair? Yes. Once again, as I stated last meeting, the salary scale that came out, and you know, and as an employee that works on a step scale, once you post a step scale to the public, I mean, that really is, that really is a, you know, a bond in my, in my book. And the, the, the scale that increased the teachers' pay scale by an additional 3% was included in the superintendent's recommended budget, which he briefed to the supervisors. It was the only pay scale that we had contact with and we saw until just recently, as you've heard on several occasions by the staff, and superintendent didn't even know about the difference. So, so here we have the public and then our employees, understanding that they're getting a certain amount of money, and then low and behold, we swapped the pay scales out, which it doesn't, you know, and the point is, it doesn't matter if it was a mistake or not, an honest mistake or not. That, that has no bearing on this question. The bearing is that it was out there, people, people were counting on this money, the money was given, the, the scales were shown to the supervisors during the supervisors' meeting. And I think we need to abide by the scale, the, the original scale. We've already discussed that, and I appreciate the 1.9, almost $2 million that came back in, in the one-time money. And, and I do think we're, we're going to have, you know, at least a $4 million salary lapse. You know, we, we're making decisions on, oh, by the way, we can't count on that, we can't count on that, we can't count on that. Well, I'm counting on the data from the previous two years, last year and this year. 8.3 million and, and 7 million. I mean, that's the data that I'm counting on to make this decision. I, I'm not going to say, "Well, we're having a bad year in the state, we're having a bad year in the governorship, and we're having a bad year here." I'm using data from last year and this year, and I'm projecting a 50% cut in that 7 million. We're going to have at least $4 million to pay, to easily pay this off. And so, that's, I'm not flip-flopping on this issue, and that's, and that's how I feel. I think we need to honor the original pay scale.
Ms. Healy, as the seconder?
You know, we, I have to say, I have been confused about a lot of this as we go along with the, we don't have steps, and now we're going to have enhancements, and we're going to have cost of living and whatever. But one question that I, that I've asked more than once is, are the teachers going to be paid based on their years of experience? And the answer to that question has consistently been yes, under this scale, they will. So, I can understand, you know, why there would be an expectation to move up to the next level, because if I'm at year, let me take a year that doesn't have an enhancement. I'm at year 20. And I look at this, is I understand it. What we're doing is, when we add the, the VRS, which it really is a negative, because they're going to get less than 1% when they pay their, their share of the cost for that. So, we're adding 2%, but when we add the 2% to my current salary at 20 years, then I become the new 21. So, it's, and, and I, I know there's probably some logic to this, but it, but it escapes me. And that, that's part of my confusion and my desire to, to make this whole. Now, I think Mrs. Kidby raises a good question about mid-year, and, and you're probably, maybe you'll like it, I don't know, but if we are able to do this for the teachers now, I would like to come back at mid-year, before mid-year, and look at doing this for the rest of the employees, because there's not, you know, that much more of the salaries. I mean, teachers are the significant portion of our salaries. And I'm not suggesting we do it now because, I mean, 2.2 million is more than, you know, we had thought it was going to be at the last meeting, but, but, but if we are able to do this for the, for the teachers now, which, you know, I, I will support, I, I want to look at doing it for the rest of the employees and, and perhaps at, you know, mid-year, or maybe something Fab can look at. And, and I have to agree with Mr. McCosker, even though I know we're, we're budgeting tighter and we're using better figures and, you know, the pencils are being sharpened and, and everything, I think there's going to be a lapse. Now, God knows, I don't want to spend it all. I don't want to get down to that line because, you know, we have a, a legal responsibility, and it would, in fact, I believe, be criminal if we were to spend more than we have, and it's something we want to stay away from. But, you know, I'd, I'd be willing to, to go out on that limb. You know, at this point, because we specifically approved it, the teachers had the understanding that that was going to be the scale, and now nobody's alleging, you know, that this stuff was done with malice aforethought, but this, this was a pretty significant mistake that affects people's livelihoods. Now, I don't like, I don't like this list. I don't, I, I can't cut all these things out. I mean... You're talking about cutting these things out, aren't you?
There's a combination.
Oh, we're going to buy them early?
We'll have some additional savings so we can buy ahead on some of the items. So, it's a combination of buy ahead or defer.
Oh, I thought you were going to cut these things out.
Buy ahead or defer. And what we're able to buy ahead will de, will depend upon what additional savings we have.
Okay, if we can buy them ahead, then to me, that's a win-win.
And Madam Chair, just for the record, please make sure that that list gets in the, in the board documents when we update it, after, so people can see the list.
Need these, and people might look and say, "Oh, do you really need carpet? Do you really need tile?" And I'd say, "Yes, I've been in the schools." And these are not healthy environments with some of this old rungy, you know, carpet or the tile with the, what we don't talk about, you know, asbestos underneath it or whatever. So, I, I don't want to cut anything out. I know it sounds like I want it all, but we, we, given our history, it seems that, you know, we will, we will most likely be able to afford this. And it's going to be too late to come back and do this, you know, for the teachers, I think, you know, next year at this time.
Madam Chair, I need a piece of clarity. The motion was the superintendent's recommended funding request. Did the scale remain the same from that point, from the first time you were here presenting the FY 17 recommended budget to us, to the book that was labeled adopt, approved budget? Was that, that's the one before adopted budget?
I believe the superintendent's recommended budget and the approved budget had the same scale.
Did it have the same scale?
The range was the same. It did not advance the years of experience.
I just wanted to make sure that...
And, and it's on page 130, it's the scale listed. I went back and checked, it was the March, so...
Right. And, and his is dated back January 10th or something like that, you know, the first time he's in front of us.
Right, that's, and I think that, maybe, maybe it was that one.
I want to make sure it's the same scale because...
Right.
Your motion was specific there on it.
Right, it was. And I, and I believe that is the correct scale, so it's the scale here to fore called...
And as we, well, you know, it's, it's, it's a leap of trust we're, we're taking again.
The scale with the extra money.
Yeah.
And I can find it.
If I, if I could ask a couple of questions here, just so we, we're clear on the actual posture here. The contracts with the corrected scale have been distributed, teachers have them in hand, and they've been returning them to their administrators, correct?
That's correct. Not, not all of them have been returned, but...
Do we have an idea of how many have been returned?
I do not, Mr. Hyrens.
And, and those contracts have the salary listed on them of the scale that's, that's attached to this agenda item, correct?
They have, they have the corrected, they have the corrected, they have the corrected scale, the contracts have the correct, include the corrected amounts.
Any other comments at this time? All right. We will be...
What's the motion right now? I need to know what the motion is. The motion is to approve the scale with the extra 2%, which was what we approved back in March and what has been consistently provided to us up to the point that we had this correction when the contracts went out.
So, we don't have that scale in front of us. We, we don't... Right. In, in the agenda item?
Yep.
Yeah, it's the first scale.
I was just looking for the actual meeting in January 26th or whatever, when it...
Yeah, it's the first, right here.
Yeah, that's what I clicked on. 42, 238. So, this was the, this was the scale that was in the superintendent's recommended budget. 2017 super, what was the date on that? Was it, was it January, like Mr. Hyrens?
It's not dated.
One good news is we're going to have to deal with the VRS.
It's the same scale, it's in what the board approved.
Okay. You're right, we want to be...
This is the last payment of the VRS that we have to put in for the salaries.
All right. So, does everybody understand the motion? Are there any comments, further comments?
The only thing I'm going to say is, I, this, I, this was not a scale that I looked at and said, "Oh, you know, what, what are these, these numbers here?" What I, what I voted on was the 1% VRS, the 2% COLA, and then a 0 to 13 salary adjustment to bring those first-year teachers up to the median of the market.
I will not be supporting the motion. I will be following the board adopted budget goals, which included across the board for employees. That's consistent with where I was before. I believe if the board thought that there was an extra 2.2 million, we may have looked at other things and not gone in this direction. I'm not saying we wouldn't have, but part of what we have been struggling with is when there are funds available, that the board wanted to make sure that they made an active decision of where monies went. And I will not be supporting the motion because I believe that our board budget goals were very clear and that we did follow them.
All right. There's been a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. Madam Clerk, will you poll the board?
Ms. Egan?
Nay.
Ms. Hazard?
Nay.
Ms. Healy?
Yes.
Mr. Hyrens?
No.
Ms. Kidby?
Yes.
Mr. McCosker?
Yes.
All right. Motion fails on a 3-3 vote. Is there another motion?
We're back to the main motion?
Yep. So, we are back to the motion on the orig, I'm not going to repeat it.
To adopt the scales.
To adopt this, the pay scale as corrected. Is that correct? That was the original motion?
In the adopted budget.
All right.
Yes.
The seconders still at least for discussion.
That's correct.
All right. That motion is on the table. Any further discussion?
I'll speak to it. I, I will vote in favor of this, and it's, it's, it's reluctance to do so, but at the price tag of $2 million, Ms. Egan put it in terms I went home and really thought about last meeting. It is a, it is putting dynamite into our budget. And it's, it's dangerous, it's not good practice. This is not the right thing to do from the heart, but it's the right thing to do for fiscal responsibility. And, you know, and then as we start comparing the 8.3, 6.9, prev, and those, those large numbers, I don't think that's a really fair comparison with the changes that we are undertaking with our budget process, which are improving our budget. My fear is that this is, this does potentially put that dynamite, dynamite into the budget that will... that will just wipe out all the good work we've been doing over the last several years. That dynamite that created the 8.3, 6.9 was placed into the budget over the last five years, eight years, 10 years because of bad practices and poor decisions. This is, again, it's, it's not the decision from the heart, but it's the, the decision to go in the right direction to continue to improve Stafford County Public Schools as a whole.
Madam Chair, just a quick comment on this. You know, I'd just like to thank, and I, I think there's a, there's a teacher population out there from 13 step, you know, step 13 and above, years of experience, 13 and above, that are doing a lot of the hard work, kind of shoring up, shoring up the school division, whether it's teaching, the new folks coming in, keeping these folks, these folks are certified folks, these folks that are going to stay in Stafford, folks that have been here for 10, 11 years and they're senior teachers, they're, they're here. They're part of, uh, they're part of Stafford. And I'm not disparaging the new teachers, and we're, we're putting a lot of money on the new teachers. But, you know, the senior teachers, this would have been a big benefit to the senior folks out there that are getting the 2% and, of course, getting the VRS 1%, but they, but they're, they're not getting a specific bump like, like the other categories. And so I just wanted to let, you know, those folks out there know that that's, that's on my mind and, um, and I'll continue to fight for those senior folks to make sure that we're keeping them on board because it, without them, we're, we're really going to be in trouble.
Ms. Kidby?
For the last eight to 10 years that I've been on this board, um, one of the things that's been really important to me is fiscal responsibility. And I think most of the board understands that watching the money has been an important part of what I feel is my responsibility. But I'm an educator. And when you made the comment that it goes contrary to your heart, I'm sorry, our teachers are the heart of this organization.
All right, any further comments?
This is just an observation. Based on Dr. Benson's rough calculations, it looks like you're projecting a lapse of between four and five million in, is that correct? 1 and 1/2 to 2%?
Ms., um, I'm hopeful that we would be in that neighborhood. I, I don't know. I mean, I don't know because we built this budget differently than we have previously. Um, there will be salary laps, there's no question about that. It's a question about, at this point, I think, how much risk the board wants to assume.
But if we, we follow this, that reduces our risk of debt, at least for this current year coming forward. I don't know what it's going to do to 2018. That worries me more than anything else.
We don't get, we don't get contracts. We don't have contracts out.
All right. Is there any further comment? All right. There's been a, a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Madam Clerk, please pull the board.
Ms. Egan?
Yes.
Ms. Hazard?
Yes.
Ms. Healy?
No.
Mr. Hyrens?
A reluctant aye.
Ms. Kidby?
No.
Mr. McOscar?
No.
Okay. All right, motion fails. So we now have, we have no contracts.
Madam Chair, I would like to move, uh, no. Madam Chair, I would like to move that we, um, approve the scale that was presented in the superintendent's recommended budget and the approved budget by the board at mid-year, January 1. Mid-year. Is that mid-year for us? No, whatever mid-year is. At a cost of approximately $1.1 million.
No, we don't know that.
Well...
Well, I, I have a question about whether or not the board has ever adjusted contracts mid-year.
Mid-year.
Actually, we wouldn't be adjusting the contract. The contract would be that it is a certain amount up to a certain point and then a certain amount at another date. That could all be in one contract. We wouldn't be adjusting a contract.
Right? Ms. Hazard? Wouldn't you think?
So do all these contracts have to be redone? Is HR going to have to redo?
They have to be anyway.
The contracts, unfortunately, are done one at a time.
Every contract is done within only 200. All right, so because we don't have the manpower to be able to physically produce the contracts, we can't do this? Is that what you're suggesting, Dr. Benson?
No. I don't believe that was what Dr. Benson said.
I'm asking Dr. Benson.
Dr. Benson's a can-do kind of person and he could make it work.
Unfortunately, I'm not sure. And, and here's the thing, is that in anticipation of the board's consideration of using the, what was it, the approved scale, we've had staff beginning to look at the contracts. We couldn't wait for the board to make a decision. If there's an adjustment tonight that looks like half of the year at one amount and half of the year at the other, we're not in a position to, I mean, I don't know how that we could get that executed before the 1st of June.
Brenda, do you do the contracts? How difficult is this? I, I know, I, I know. I didn't mean to be rude, I'm sorry.
It's, it's not that complicated. It's half of the increase.
Well, let's ask, let's ask Brenda.
It's when the increase starts.
Yeah, let's ask Brenda.
I'm just going to say from, from the payroll side of things, okay? Number one, if we would do the contracts now, HR would have to look at every person's contract individually, of course, and make those changes. If we wait and make the adjustments mid-year, we would literally have to manually pay off every contract on the old amount and we would have to recalculate it on the new amount. Because unfortunately, all of our teachers do not start at the beginning of the year. And there are many contract changes that take place within the first semester of a year. So we have many people who are not on the exact same, they've gotten educational supplements, et cetera, so they will have to be looked at individually. And two other things, if I might beg the board to listen and I apologize for bringing this up, I just feel like it's my responsibility to mention that going into FY '18, on the employer's side, we will see nearly a 2% increase in VRS costs because they have already put the numbers out for FY '18 and they are increasing them. And so on the employer's side, we will have almost 2% additional cost for FY '18.
And that's, that's one year. That 2% will have to be applied to FY '18.
It has to be applied to every salary come FY '18.
In next month?
So that's just information I feel like I had to share with you.
Thank you, Brenda.
All right, at this time, there's no motion on the table.
There's not been a second, mine.
All right. So now we have no contracts. Is there going to be any other motion for this evening regarding this issue?
Madam Chair, may I restate the original motion? The original sub-motion of...
Sure. It's, it's already been acted on?
You can't vote on it again.
It's a whole new motion.
The other one's dead.
Yep. Right. Been voted on once, twice. Is that correct?
But it's a new motion that you're making.
It's a brand-new motion I'm allowed to make. I'm allowed to make a brand-new, so I, so, so, yeah, we need to get moving. So, you know, I move that we, the board approves the original adopted in the budget, this...
It is.
Approved, as shown here on the FY '17 budgets, the heretofore as the extra 2% pay scale.
Madam Chair, point of order, that, that's the same motion that you did before. It has to be a, it's my understanding, it has to be a different motion.
It has to be different, the first one failed.
Right.
Correct.
And that's the one that, that was a hung jury, so to speak.
Right, we can't bring the same motion, the same...
I, I thought I was allowed to make a brand-new motion.
It is, but it's not...
But it isn't. It's the same motion we made before.
All right.
Just not. So we need some clarification on where this puts us. Because right now, teachers have contracts out there that they've signed or returned. And are we not going to have a teaching corps for this coming school year?
The motion that we were advised to consider was to approve the scale and ratify the contracts, which we didn't do.
So how about, so how about, Madam Chair, I move, I move to approve the original, um, the, I move to approve the original presented teacher scale, the extra 2% and add a dollar to each one of those, each one of those scales as a stipend. May I have a second?
No, 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 it's a stipend, just added to the...
Yeah.
I'm really interested.
Yes, so, so the original scale and plus a dollar.
Is there a second?
Is there a second?
I would suggest a ruling from the parliamentarian.
Yes. Do you want to take a five-minute break while we determine?
Point of privilege, just five minutes, Madam Chair.
Mm-hmm. Thanks. Let's move on to 12.03. Approve 2016-17 Head Start and Early Head Start Supplement.
Madam Chair, move for approval.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Just a point of clarification.
Okay.
Did, I think we talked about this, that we do have, Pam, we have the funds to cover.
Yes.
I talked to Lance and he talked to Barry and they said it goes, the 9,000 could easily be worked into the budget.
Okay, great. Okay, wait, so the amount that we are approving, wait a minute, I'm sorry, I'm on the wrong item.
168, 146.
The non-budgeted portion is 63, 744, 104, 402, and 9,419 according to the agenda item. Is that incorrect?
The 63,744 is not in the budget at this time. It is, we're requesting that from the federal government. The 104 for the bus is not in the budget at this time. We're requesting that from the federal government. The 9,000 is in the budget at this time, according to Mr. Wolf and Barry.
Because it says here that it's not, the 9,000 is not budgeted in the agenda item.
Because at that point, when I wrote the agenda item, I did not know whether it was budgeted or not.
Okay, so this is new information from Lance, okay.
But this says that it is only up to 40% of the funding, so we have no local responsibility. The full amount would come from the federal government for 63...
Right. And what I stated was I'm not sure that they will fund the startup for the bus. Um, and I don't know how much of the 63 they'll fund, but whatever they fund, we'll take.
Okay, that is my concern, is if we approve this, we have then just added 104 in these items into our budget, whether it is funded or not, which gives me grave concern.
No, you're, you're not, what I'm asking for approval for is for you to approve the refund, the application that we're putting into the federal government.
Yeah, my understanding is this is approval to apply.
Yes, exactly.
Okay. Is everybody clear?
Yes.
All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Moving on to 12.04.
Madam Chair, motion to approve 12.04.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Moving on to 12.05. Proposed regulations regarding the flexible benefits plan. Is there a motion?
Madam Chair, motion to approve 12.05.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. 12.06. Probationary period policy 4406. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve 12.06.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Just, Madam Chair, so I, just so I'm reading this correctly, it is six, a six-month probationary period for newly hired service employees?
Yes.
Yes. Unless extended.
Yes, Madam Chair, that is correct.
Okay. That was the discussion of our board last time.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Moving on to information.
Madam Chairman?
Sorry.
With the consent of the board, I'd like to move information item 1304, the naming Rodney Thompson Middle School softball field in honor of Vicki Johnson, up to action.
Second.
It's been, do you want to move it first to the...
To 1301.
You want to move it to 1301 first? Okay, let's do it there.
Move to 1301 and then...
Okay, so to move...
Second. You know the hoops we love.
I'm just trying to be efficient here.
Yeah, second. It's government.
All right. All those in favor of moving 1304 to 1301, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Is there a motion?
Yes, Madam Chairman, I'd like to move 1304, the new 13, well, whatever number it is, I'd like to move it to action and I appreciate the representatives of Rodney Thompson who've come tonight and spoken so eloquently, you know, about Ms. Johnson.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I had just a comment real quickly. I think it should go notice that the school itself, Rodney Thompson, is, is named after an educator, actually a math teacher, I understand, that was with us for many years. So it seems very fitting to me that we continue in that, um, in that vein and, and named the field after Vicki. Vicki was an important part of the community at Rodney Thompson. And she, um, she left very unexpectedly. So I think it's, uh, it's really a nice gesture to, to go forward with that.
All right, it's been moved and seconded to move this action, this item to action. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ms. Healy, one more motion.
All right, motion to approve.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you all for coming to support that, um, that very important. Let's move on to what was 13.01, but it was approved, the 2016-17 Stafford Head Start and Early Head Start COLA Supplement Amendment. Are there any questions for Ms. Massey? Similar to the discussion before, it's to amend the application.
This is, this is an application that I'm asking you to approve, that we write for this funding. It is the COLA funding that all Head Start programs are getting 1.8%. And it would be great if you all would consider moving it to action.
All right, do I...
Um, Madam Chair, I move that we take, is it still 13.01? And move it to action.
It would be 02, no.
1302?
Yeah, second.
All right. All those in, any discussion on moving this item to action? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously, Ms. Kidby?
Yeah.
Yeah, Madam Chair, I move that we approve the Stafford Head Start and Early Head Start COLA Supplement as outlined in 13.02.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously, moving on, just stay same as Massey, we have the Stafford Head Start Federal Funds Budget Revision Supplement Amendment regarding a handicapped accessible vestibule. Any questions for Ms. Massey regarding this item?
If I may, this, it appears as if you were able to free up some money, save some money throughout the year, and, and this is something that's really needed in order to be able to, to, to deal with your folks that, that have these handicapping conditions, is that correct?
Exactly, it's been in our goals for many years, and I apologize that I've got this issue going on, but it's been in our goals for many years to have a handicapped accessible entrance, and we've got some savings in fringe benefits and salaries for this year that we're in right now, so it's not next year's money, it's this year's money that we're asking the budget revision for.
So you, you would go ahead and do the, the work this year?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
Can I get, oh, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Can I get some clarification, do these grants, you always come into us, I mean, this in a negative way, but I think we had this discussion before, you often come into us in one meeting, and, and it's almost always these Head Start grants are being asked to move, to be moved to action that same evening, is that time constraint that tight on every application?
For the COLA, they've given us a month and a half, and for this budget revision, it actually, I sent it up in April, and they sent it back to me and said, you need your board chair's signature on it, so that's why it's back before you for the budget revision, so that's why it's here, so.
And Mr. Hirons, I would also say, many times, because of how Head Start, I've just learned this, going to the, the policy council, the policy council has to actually recommend to the board, so they have to meet, we have to meet, it's a lot of times the timing.
Usually I'm writing the grant two months before, you know, it actually is due.
Do you maintain a list of reoccurring grants, because some of these we see every year, don't we?
You do, and I, and I do, but until I know the exact amount and know what, what salaries you have allocated for what positions, then I, it's all of that.
Okay, I was just trying to get, because it's, it's always with these, it's, and it's okay if it's, if it, if that time is what it is, but it is always.
Well, like a normal refunding application, I got that to you in, in a timely manner, and then you all had, you know, the full time to act on it, and again, if you want to hold the COLA, and, you know, I can come back and.
We already proved it.
Yeah, you already proved that, but this one is, this one that you're looking at right now is very critical that we get it back up to them as fast as possible, the budget revision.
Yeah, I, I don't oppose it or anything, I just, you know.
Believe me, as, as fast as I can write the grants, I'm doing.
That better understanding of the process, and it's, it's essentially the federal government's time constraints that they're putting on us.
And we always know what they're going to do, is they're gonna spend a lot of time crafting the RFP, and then they want it back ASAP.
Oh, yeah, Duane and I probably have some conversation to be about that, especially those guppies, yeah.
Madam Chair, I move that we take item 13.03, and move it to action, please.
Second.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion on moving this item to action? If not, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion has been moved to action, is there a follow-on motion?
Yes, Madam Chair, I move that we approve the 2015-2016 Stafford Head Start Federal Funds Budget Supplement Amendment for 74,950.
Second.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Moving on, we will be receiving, thank you, Ms. Massey, we will be receiving for information the superintendent's draft metrics.
No, he's not here.
No, he's not going to be doing it.
No, he's not gonna be doing it.
You're gonna have to kick that.
Well, why don't we put that on?
That will be Dr., no, we need to move this on, Dr. Parrish came and is all, and is ready to go. Well, we don't have any superintendent back, so we might as well keep, all right, thank you, Dr. Parrish.
Thank you. Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, School Board Members, and Dr. Benson, it is my pleasure to come before you tonight to review Stafford County Public Schools' Strategic Plan by NO priorities and metric goals. Through the School Board's work, Stafford County Public Schools has embarked on a new path, which is evident in the development of our new vision, mission, and core values as our foundation. Refocusing our efforts is our charge. Recently, the School Board developed and adopted a new strategic plan, which provides staff a forward-looking roadmap that aligns to the vision, mission, and core values. In addition, it forces us to ask the following questions. Number one, where are we? Number two, what resources are available? Number three, where do we want to be? And number four, how do we get there? Through the development of the strategic plan, the first two questions were answered. The Board answered the third question, where do we want to be, by defining our goals of focus as student achievement, workforce, resource stewardship, and communication. Utilizing these broad overarching goals, the Board set priorities. Under student achievement, the Board has identified three priorities. Under workforce, the Board has identified three priorities. Under resource.
Could you go back to that previous? I just want to look at these.
All right. You're welcome. Under resource stewardship, the Board has identified two priorities. And under communication, the Board has identified two priorities. With the fourth essential question as a guide, how do we get there? Staff created monitoring metrics as indicators of our success towards strategic plan goals. A metric is a quantifiable measure utilized to track, monitor, and assess the success or failure of various goals. Tonight, I will highlight the monitoring metrics currently not implemented by staff and metrics that the Board may not be familiar with. In addition to the monitoring metrics, the Board will also see priority measure statements. These priority measures are bold affirmative statements which align to the Board's priorities. Goal one, student achievement, priority 1.1 measure, students will experience success through engaging and challenging curriculum and innovative instructional strategies inclusive of critical thinking, creativity, collaboration, communication, citizenship, and wellness. The first metric I will highlight are walkthroughs, which Stafford County Public Schools refer to as learning walks. This is the first time we will be able to collect quantifiable observational data at the district level. These learning walks will provide staff with look-for's that are aligned and rooted in research-based instructional practices merged with areas of C5W that align to the state's learner profile. The second metric is a district-wide initiative implemented in the 2015-2016 school year, which provides every eighth, ninth, 10th, and 11th grade student the opportunity to participate in the PSAT 8-9 and the PSAT National Merit Scholarship Qualifying Test. This data will assist with identifying instructional areas we should approve upon based on a nationally norm assessment. This assessment is also the gateway to identifying students with advanced placement potential. Student achievement priority 1.2 measure, all students will have equitable access to core and specialty programs, elective opportunities, and resources. The metric I will highlight is school quality reviews. School quality reviews provide critical tools, tools to help schools build on their successes in order to improve teaching and promote student achievement. Through self-evaluation, schools build the capacity to engage in a program of continuous quality improvement. The SQRs include four stages. First, preparation and self-evaluation. Second, site visits. Third, feedback including written reports. And fourth, school improvement action plans. These reviews will allow staff to conduct deeper dives into the evaluation of equitable access of our programs, elective opportunities, and resources. Student achievement priority 1.3 measure, achievement gaps will be closed for all reporting categories, utilizing data-driven instructional strategies and practices. The first metric I will highlight is the cognitive abilities test results for all second graders. Currently, only referred students are administered this assessment as a part of the identification process for gifted services. Staff is proposing to administer all second grade students this assessment and utilize this data to assist teachers in differentiating instruction to meet the needs of every student. The second grade assessment can also be used as a data point for the identification for the gifted, for gifted services, and will be the building block for the longitudinal data report for grades K through, K through eight, excuse me. The longitudinal data report for K through eight will be housed in the On Track Longitudinal Data System. This data system provides a student warehouse, intervention tracking, performance monitoring, and an early warning system for the division. This data system is a free resource from the Virginia Department of Education due to our, our usage of interactive achievement. Currently, our efforts are focused on K through eight, but hope to implement it K through 12 in the near future. Goal two, workforce, priority 2.1 measure, reduction of class size across content areas and grades. The metric I will highlight is the staffing priority process. The staffing priority process will be in direct alignment with Stafford County Public Schools' Staffing Standards Plan, and will allow the Board to identify staffing priorities as a part of the budget process. Workforce priority 2.2 measure, data-driven market-based compensation and benefit models. Staff have begun the implementation of all metrics for priority 2.2. For example, reporting of Stafford County Public School compensation packages against comparable to school divisions and applicable marketplace. Workforce priority 2.3 measure, a division-wide master framework for professional learning and training. The metric I will highlight is the onboard employee program. As you all know, investing time in our employees is the best way to keep employee turnover low and our return on investment high. This program will be provided to every individual hired by Stafford County Public Schools regardless of position title. This will provide the Division an opportunity to highlight the importance of our vision, mission, and core values. Goal three, resource stewardship, priority 3.1 measure, implement data-supported recommendations from the Resource Utilization and Services Studies. Staff have begun the implementation of all metrics for priority 3.1, for example, reporting of Resource Utilization and Services Studies recommendations. Resource stewardship priority 3.2 measure, implement new enterprise resource planning system and use enhanced analytics to monitor resource utilization and more efficiency and transparency. The metric I will highlight is instructional program expenditures. Through, through our new ERP financial system, staff will be able to produce more efficient and transparent reporting of program expenditures, assisting the Board in analyzing and then monitoring the utilization of funds for instructional programs. Goal four, communication, priority 4.1 measure, oops, sorry.
One more slide, there you go.
Sorry. Communication priority 4.1 measure, foster proactive and positive communications to ensure all stakeholders are engaged and well-informed. The metric I will highlight is survey of targeted audiences that evaluates effectiveness of Stafford County Public Schools' communication program. In order to pinpoint communication needs of our community, we must be, we must make a commitment to collecting this data and utilizing it to build an effective communication plan. This plan will lay the foundation of how Stafford County Public Schools conducts business. Communication priority 4.2 measure, develop and implement comprehensive and project-specific plans. The metric I will highlight is monitoring project charter completion. Project charters allow staff to describe the variety of projects being initiated, how the projects will be approached, and assign a stakeholder's responsibility to components of the plan. Next steps, as the Board reviews the monitoring metrics, it is important for the Board to know that staff is pursuing a cloud-based data management system to assist with the execution of the strategic plan. This system will allow staff to track progress towards priority goals, and it would allow School Board members to conduct real-time progress monitoring of the strategic plan goals. Once the Board is comfortable with approving the monitoring metrics, staff will develop and produce strategies for action. Thank you for your time, do you have any questions?
Any questions from Board members or comments?
Can you just read that one more time for me, please?
Mr. Hirons? Mr. Hirons, oh, sorry.
Just, just real quick, I, I wanted to thank Dr. Parrish for being here tonight and sharing this, I had an opportunity to sit, sit down with her and Dr. Benson, because I had several questions about how we were going to go forward with some of these things and what some of the things meant, and I'm just real excited about this document and the direction it's going to take, not only our individual schools, but the entire Stafford County Public Schools as a whole. I think this is a giant step forward in, in the right direction, and I wish we had more time just to talk about this and not have to talk about all that other stuff that we're dealing with tonight, because this is really good news.
Mr. Hirons?
Dr. Parrish, to get a little bit specific here, 1.3 under student, student achievement, one of the metrics was the COGAT?
COGAT.
COGAT?
Mm-hmm.
Test to all second graders, which all second graders do not currently take, correct?
That is correct.
Is there a reduction test, you know, is, is a test somewhere along their career in Stafford County being reduced? One of the things that we hear about, and I think all of us share, is, is using tests for student achievement, and test, 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 test. So I, I am a little bit concerned about this one specific metric and this, this one measure of we're adding a test to our world here in Stafford County for this process.
So the COGAT is an abilities test, not an achievement test, so our hope is that we will be able to find out how students process their information, which is totally different than SOL tests, which are achievement tests.
True.
And benchmark testing that we do in, in different grades, but our hope is to kind of get a handle of it at second grade, so by the time they get to third grade, we could have worked on some of those skills that they have not been, you know, provided access to, if that makes sense. So it's, it's an abilities test, not an achievement test.
And I get that, but it is just the concern of, of, you know, it has the name test in it, so.
And it's not as time-consuming as other achievement tests.
What about, is there any workload on the, the teaching staff at all to administer that test?
Yeah, what I've been told is that they can administer tests as a class, and they, at this level, they would read the test to the students, so it's not something they would have to pull out students out of class, they could do it as a whole class assessment.
I'm a little concerned about that, but I may give you a call, or Dr. Benson, a call to talk through that a little bit? Okay. The last thing you mentioned was about real-time monitoring by School Board members in this new application, is that going to be able to be posted to the website as well for the public to be able to see?
We, we hope so, that we'll be able to do some type of line from the system to the, the website.
I think that's one of the most important things out of this entire process of, of a strategic plan, is your picture of how you're doing as an organization, so it's very important that we're able to demonstrate that and, and project that out to the public as a whole.
Absolutely.
Thank you so much for your time and work in this, I really appreciate it.
Thank you. Yeah, oh, yes, sorry, Ms. Healy.
I, I just had an observation, and it has to do with student achievement priority 1.2 measure, all students will have equitable access to core and specialty programs, elective opportunities, and resources. It certainly was, you know, my understanding of that one, that it, it is not just limited to like the AP or the IB or those kind of classes, and I noticed one of the metrics is students participating in at least one AP course across reporting categories. I'd like to make sure that, that we're including in the measurement the opportunities for students in other types of courses that may or may not be, you know, the.
AP, IB.
AP dual enrollment, IB, these are real, these are important, and I'm a big supporter of those, but there's, you know, the, the CTE or some of the other types of courses because the, the equitable access is.
To every program.
To the program.
You mean like foreign language?
Oh, well, yeah, foreign language, or, or even, you know. Foreign language or even, you know, the carpentry, the masonry, the fire and rescue, you know, the different types of things that we offer, the culinary programs, the, you know, the arts. And I don't know how we're going to do that, but I'd like to think that we're not just going to be measuring, I mean, there's other things here, but to put all that focus on the AP without acknowledging the other, you know, types of programs, I don't know, it's just, to me, it's important because we need to go beyond just the students that are going to, you know, be heading off for the colleges and universities. Thank you.
So, Ms. Healy, I totally agree. I think there is a metric about CTE in there to kind of track what type of students are taking those courses. So we hope through our school quality reviews that we can do a deeper dive in, you know, all of our programs, not just AP and IB, but CTE and culinary and cosmetology, a broad overview of how our, you know, programs are accessed by students. So no, definitely, no worries.
Thank you.
Welcome.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, I think at this time, we will stand in recess for a moment until we know that we have a report coming from
Do you want to tell everybody what's happening?
No, I think we need to wait until we have some
Let's tell them we're ready for them.
Okay, well, let's stand for a moment, they may be upstairs working, we'll have to go get them. So, I mean, we can go into closed session, but we can't because we need the superintendent for our closed session.
We have this, sit in.
I don't know about whether we go into closed session now instead at this time.
Yep.
I think we do, too.
I suggest you put us at rest and somebody run upstairs and see where they're at.
Okay.
The same rest.
They may be out there.
We'll be adjourned for a moment. We'll be adjourned for a moment. Well? All right, we will be bringing back item, oh, now I guess it's 13.04, is that correct? Regarding, oh, sorry, let me get there, discussing and approving the teacher salary scale, is there any direction to staff at this point of how to move forward?
It was my understanding that staff's going to take a look at what it would cost if we did a 1% rather than the 2%. Is that correct?
I believe that is one item that could be considered. Is there a sense of the board that the board would like that looked into, or is there a motion?
Do we have a dollar figure?
It's just divided to 1.1. Is it 1?
Yeah, we took the scale, and we have a spreadsheet put together, we took the scale and we went halfway between the approved and the adopted, and it's approximately 1.1 million dollars.
Okay.
And we could certainly, if there was support among the board, we could certainly print that scale and show that scale to the board.
I move that we take the halfway mark between the two scales with a 1% increase over the approved scale and 1% less than what was published as the adopted scale. Is that correct?
Mr. Fulmer, is it 1%? The halfway point, 1% consistent?
To keep in mind that in both of the scales, the first level and the top level were consistent, we want to preserve that.
Exactly, so it would be from level 2 through 35, is that correct? That we'd have a 1% adjustment?
It would not be an even 1% across all scales because not all scale, the difference between the approved and the adopted was a flat 2% because of the teacher enhancement and moving from one scale to the second scale. Because it wasn't that the 2% wasn't included, it's that individuals weren't moved up a step or year of experience.
My motion then is to move halfway between what the approved scale and the adopted scale is for each level. Would that be a correct motion?
Yes.
Okay. That's my motion.
Is there a second for discussion or?
Second for discussion.
All right.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Just, I had a motion on the table for the 2% plus a dollar, and I had a second to that motion, but we never had a vote.
Had a second to that motion? Okay, I didn't know there was a second, I'm sorry, I must have
You didn't get a second?
I think Mr. Nelson was looking into whether you could do that.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a motion that's been seconded, let's do this one first because it's, is there any discussion on that particular motion?
Which motion?
Yours.
Okay.
Because that's the only one on the table.
Okay.
Or on the dais, I guess. Is there any support?
Yeah.
Or do we not want staff to look at it?
I would like, I would like, well, I guess they looked at it quickly and it was, how much?
1.1.
1.1 million dollars, so I just don't know, why don't we just do the 2% and do it 2.2 million dollars? Is it just a matter of money or is it a matter of principle? So if it's a matter of principle and we have the money, I don't see why, you know, and the initial one failed, but we can get around that with a substitute motion for an extra dollar or less a dollar, or, I mean, that, so, you know, this was, the salary lapse money was the salary lapse predominantly based on the teacher, the senior teachers and the junior teachers coming in. And so it's only rightful that they get that money. They get the 2% as promised.
Okay.
This is only a million dollars we're talking about now, and I'm not trying to say that flippantly, but hey, listen, you know, once again, 8.3, 7 million, which will probably be 8, and then the projected is easily going to be 5 million in '18, so I just don't, I just don't see
Madam Chair, I may
I have a question, too.
Ms. Kidby first.
My rationale is I am not overly concerned with the 2017 budget. I am concerned with the 2018 budget because there's too many unknowns in that budget. And I want to make sure that we don't do something that is not sustainable. One of our goals as a board, that's why I had her flip that up there again, is to make sure that our salary scales are sustainable. That's the worst thing that we can do is create a salary scale that we cannot sustain, and it's not clear to me, I'm not suggesting that we can't sustain it, but it's not clear to me that as we go into 2018, we can sustain this. It's not clear to me at this point, so I can't vote to go with the full 2%, but I can go with halfway in between at this point.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Ms. Egan.
Chris, did we get a reallocation from the Board of Supervisors for that 8.3 million dollars? Last I heard, it was across the street. Do we have that money now?
We do not.
Okay. So why do we keep talking about the 8.3? As far as I know, the Board of Supervisors are already trying to figure out ways to spend the money. So Brook Road was one of the projects they were talking about, so I don't foresee us ever getting that money. So, you know, either way you look at it, 1.1 or 2.2, it's deficit budgeting, and I'm not going to support either one of them.
All right.
And point of clarification, so as I stated earlier, the reason that those data points came into play was that we are projecting our '18 salary lapse. So whether we get the money or not doesn't matter. So the 8.3 is, we don't have the money, but that was the 8.3 in salary lapse, and then we're projecting a 6.9 to more like probably 7, and more like 8 in salary lapse. And what I'm saying is, yes, we're going to tighten up our budget constraints and we're going to do the downward curve, and I'm just, I'm giving a very low estimate of 5 million dollars for '18. And that is why I put those data points together. It doesn't matter whether we have it or not, but we're going to have it, and that's why that we should give the 2 million.
Just
Mr. Hirons?
Real quick, I did second the motion, I'm probably going to vote in favor of it if it's, actually it comes to a vote here. Risk-based decision here, 2.2, anything we do here puts our budget at risk for '17 and for '18 in particular. I am making myself comfortable here of reducing that risk by a million dollars. A million dollars' risk is pretty significant for our budget when it's mostly people. So this motion, it gets us to, into the direction of acknowledging this was something stupid that was done, it was a mistake, and it's a mistake we, the school board, have to own up to and pay for. And I'm willing to accept that risk there, right around a million dollars where I was two weeks ago or last week when we talked about it, and, you know, the rough estimate was right around a million dollars. As it comes up to 2 million dollars, I cannot get there. I can't add that risk to our budgets.
All right, yeah, Ms. Healy.
Mrs. Kidby, would you consider adding to that motion a mid-year review? To see if we could, you know, increase it in mid-year? Depending on, we should have some projections by mid-year, should we not, Dr. Benson, on where we're going to go? I mean, my concern right now is the contracts. And if we don't approve something tonight, we don't meet again until June 14th. We may or may not have another member, but that's a lot of responsibility to put on someone that would just be, you know, hitting the ground on the board to be the deciding vote. You know, my preference clearly is to go with the whole, you know, 2%, but in the interest of getting contracts out, in the interest of acknowledging, you know, the responsibility as you, you know, stated, Mr. Hirons, I, you know, I could support it if it included a mid-year review. And included in the mid-year review would be not just the teachers but all employees to see if there's something that could be done at that point. It's not a commitment, it's not a promise, but it would be, you know, a review to see what the financial picture looks like at the mid-year. And we'd also have an idea then as to what the picture's going to look at for the next year.
Okay, to compound things, I might be willing to consider, however, the mid-year review would not be for the teachers, it would be for all employees to get the additional percent.
Well, that's what I suggested, Mrs. Hazard.
Well, no, it was to look at, I thought, I understood it to be that the teachers would get the 2%, and then we would look at others to get
Well, to look at the whole picture, but, you know, ideally, we'd be doing this for all our employees, but
But we are not.
That's not, we're not in that position right now, but yes, I would like to do that, I don't want to leave the other employees out.
I have a question, clarification question. Didn't Mrs. O'Brien just come up here a little bit ago and say that if we did anything mid-year, we were going to have to buy out all the contracts and reissue all the contracts again? Isn't that what she just said?
We could amend the contracts.
Well, one solution would be to do a mid-year stipend.
That's what I was just
It would still be reportable to VRS, we would have to report it, but it would be as a stipend versus redoing everybody's base salary. So we could do a mid-year stipend.
Madam Chair, just the issue with the mid-year stipend, though, is, you know, base salary is what the senior teachers are retiring on, correct? I mean, so an increase in base salary is going to be more advantageous to the employee at the most senior level, is that correct?
Yes, their retirement is going to be based on their three highest years. If we would do a stipend, that would be across a six-month period or five-month period. You could direct us to say that that would be reportable to VRS.
So it would be included in their retirement?
And that's something that would also be eaten up by the IRS. We just learned that. I mean, what's the point? I don't think it's going to take off.
Well, again, I believe what Ms. Healy was asking for is just a review.
A good faith review, of course. I mean, not just a cursory, okay, we looked at it, can't do it, you know. And it's a sad thing that I even have to say that, a good faith review, but that's what I'd be looking for.
All right, I will, I'm sorry. I think that the two people that are standing in front of us have certainly done an amazing job picking up a lot of pieces, and I would just like to say thank you to you two. I hope you didn't take those comments incorrectly because you all have worked exceedingly hard for us. I know it would be a good faith review, and I believe in the superintendent that it would be a good faith review.
My, this isn't about the staff, this is about the board and what we're doing, and this is, I'm not, I think it's getting late, we've been here a long time, if we're not going to agree, then we ought to just drop it and then let it come back. This was no reflection at all, let me just make that clear. I'm talking about the board and how the board looks at it. And it will help when we have seven people because one way or the other, there's going to be a majority.
Okay.
Just, for the record, was the amendment accepted by the motion maker?
Yes, I'll accept that amendment.
And as a secondor, I'll accept it to be ensure that it is a review. I think we should probably instruct staff to put it on our agenda for our December meeting right now, that that will be on our December meeting.
Well, mid-year isn't
January?
Isn't January, because our contracts
For 10 months start in really October.
Yeah. What would mid-year be? I know each contract's a little different.
For 10-month employees, it would be
September, October, November, December, January.
January, February, one. So it would be in their February 1st, starting February 1st forward for 10-month employees.
Where are those math kids from?
So I'm thinking, yeah, you know, that's why I always tell my kids, you have 10 figures for a reason. Okay. Yeah, so we could put it on the agenda in January, then, that would be a more appropriate time.
Yes, we may want to start looking at it a little sooner than that so we can come up with some things, but yes, so that we would have an action item or a motion coming back, yes.
And it'd probably be on the FAB's agenda to look, start looking at or get staff's input for December. I just, I don't want something to, I don't want us to make this motion and make us feel like we're feeling good right now. I want to make sure that it's understood that this will be on our agenda, and a part of the motion is it will be on the agenda.
I have to say, I still don't know, we've talked about stipends, we've talked about, I don't know what we were voting on. I don't know what numbers exactly, how a stipend works, what's the difference.
We're not voting on a stipend right now.
That's what we're going to review, we're going to look at our financial situation, we're going to see, you know, what resources, if any, are available, and then decide if we can, if it is the will of the board to give an increase to all the employees or a portion of the employees.
So, Madam Chair.
So, let me reiterate my motion. My motion is to adjust the scale so it reflects halfway between the approved scale, which was also the superintendent's, in the superintendent's proposed budget, and the adopted scale. So it's halfway in between those two in terms of salary adjustment for the teacher scale with a mid-year review of our financial situation as it relates to salaries for all employees. Is that what you wanted?
On the agenda in January?
January.
Yeah. Oh, Scott seconded, he's the second, is that acceptable?
Yeah, that's acceptable. Not joyous, but acceptable. And just Madam Chair, just, and I appreciate the board working, you know, this governance business is tough, it's late, everyone gets, but, you know, this is important, this is very, very important to stay up till whenever to get it right. Yeah, I'm not going to support it, I'm going to stick to my guns, I'm going to, I want the 2%, I'm not going to support it, but it looks like by an informal polling of the board and talking, it's like you guys may be moving towards a 1% with a, thanks to Ms. Healy and Mr. Hirons, about, you know, a good review for all employees at mid-year.
Because I don't know what these are, I don't really get it.
It's business.
All right. Is there any further information anybody needs to, to look at this motion? Dr. Benson, I would like to ask, and you may choose not to comment, and I, I would appreciate that. Is there any comment you would like to make? And if the answer's no, it's okay. But if there is, I want to make sure you had it.
Madam Chair, I mean, I have, I've shared my concerns earlier in, in terms of where there's, there's some risk there. Can I tell you all exactly what the risk is? I cannot. And if we, you know, had our new financial management system in place, our ability to project would be a little bit, well, not a little bit, be a lot better than where we are right now. What we do is very labor-intensive when we try to project savings. The manner in which we process contracts is very labor-intensive. You know, it's, it's important that, that as soon as we can, we get to a point where we say, yeah, we're ready to issue contracts and these are the amounts to our, to our teachers. We, we did a, a quick check with, with our attorney. We, we really need to get contracts in folks' hands by the 15th of, of June. So whatever the pleasure the board is moving forward and keeping in mind that, that it takes us quite a while to generate those contracts and that we do them essentially one at a time with the kind of information that we currently put on there, which breaks out master stipends, you know, all that kind of information is on there. And perhaps we may need to look at the level of detail that we're providing in order to expedite that to some degree. But there's, there's a time-sensitive piece to this as well, is that we, we want our teachers to know what they can expect in terms of compensation for next year such that they don't go looking elsewhere. And the sooner we have them under contract, the better. Technically, just from a technicality point, teachers that are in continuing contracts, we, we don't have to have a signed contract in hand. Basically, that contract that they received simply says, here's what we agree to compensate you for in this next year. We do need signed contracts from folks that are in probationary status. If the board chooses to, to move forward with this current motion, I would ask that Mr. Fulmer display the three scales on the screen here so that the board can see the scale that you would be considering as proposed. And we will show what was approved, what was adopted, and what is being proposed here this evening. So that, I want to make sure that you actually see it in front of you. And I, I appreciate Ms. Kidby's motion to go halfway between the two. I just, I want to make sure that you see it, okay?
Dr. Benson, are you, the 1.1, so we would need to rerun the budget books, all the budget books, correct? We, I mean, we'll have to readopt a budget because that will completely change.
We amend the budget. We, we've done this often in the past. You know, we, at once a budget is adopted, there are changes that are, are made for one reason or another, and the change comes to us as an amendment to approve and make it part of the budget.
So.
Well, my understanding is the total dollars that, that we, in our resolution, are not going to change. That will not change. Our budget dollars will not change. It's just how we're allocating them. And, and I, and I understand, and it, it may be, I mean, we're talking 1.1 million over, over a $270 million budget. Basically, that's going to affect three lines in each area: instruction, technology, et cetera, et cetera. It's going to be the, the salary line, the, and the, and the benefits line, the health, it'll affect health, won't it? It'll, yeah, a little bit. It might. FICA, that kind of stuff. So it'll affect those lines. So it'll be a change to every single one of those lines. And those changes will, will have to be generated whether or not we need to produce another budget book. Leave that up. I mean, but it's, it's, it's not a huge number in relation to the overall budget. The overall budget number is not going to change.
I would, if, if this is the direction that the board heads, we would come back on June 15th with a potential redirection of, of funds and the potential to buy ahead on some of the items that we have provided for the board tonight as a, a means to offset some of those costs.
I would also ask the FAB, we have a planned meeting for the 31st, correct? Can we put it as an agenda item for discussion and any information we have at that point? If you could bring to the FAB. I'm not asking for, you know, the final to be there. But so we're discussing it there and get, get up to speed a little bit there.
Well, let's see if we've even out four votes for this then. We may not.
Are we going to wait to see the scales before we vote?
Give him just a minute.
Where's the abacus?
Dr. Benson, when you come back with the numbers, perhaps we can consider that extra $600,000 we anticipate getting this year for the ADM, which was not included in the surplus that was discussed with the 6.9. So that, I mean, that could pay for almost half of this.
One of the things that I'll be asking Mr. Fulmer to do is to, to do another analysis on projected savings in this current year. And so the numbers will be much tighter for us come middle of June. Did you get one? Sorry. So the board would note, the, the range does not change. We start at 42, 238, and we end at 83, 331 on each one of the scales. And then the other years of experience, we go, we go halfway.
So for example, at level 25, what was adopted would be 66, 358. What we'd be voting on right now would be 67, 170.
And Mr. Fulmer, that 36 is 36 plus?
Yes.
Okay. So that 36 is 36 plus. Okay. No change there.
Ms. Kidby, I just want to, can you repeat what you said when you were confirming? Because I think you were off a step.
At level 25, for example, I don't know if that's example, I missed before, but now I am. In the adopted budget at level 25, it was 64, 770. And what we are voting on, attempting to vote on right now, it would be at 65, 564. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Is 35 and 36 are both the same number? Is that right on the adopted approved budget scale?
Yes, because the 36 scale, because they hadn't moved up, so it didn't change.
That was the root cause.
Are there any comments or further questions by board members?
Just recalling the adopted budget scale based on the 3%, but not on the scale that was shown during the adopted budget, correct?
What?
So the approved, the approved budget scale was the, the full 6%.
Was the scale that went out with the superintendent's recommended budget and the original approved budget.
Right. And then the adopted bu, teacher budget scale.
What the actual contracts.
What the actual contracts went out. That's what we're calling this, this adopted budget scale. That's the one, that's the percentage that was shown in the contracts.
Yes, sir.
But that wasn't a scale that was actually shown, was it, anywhere?
It was, it was the scale in the adopted budget, but it was not presented to you prior to adopting the budget.
So this would, this was, I, I'm just concerned about the adopted budget teacher scale. I mean, I know, since we are showing this, that's. I just wanted to make it for, for note, though, that this was the, the amount placed on a scale now so we could see.
That's correct, Mr. McCosker. And it's just, it's, it's in order for us to, because this is the way we've referenced the scales as, as a part of the whole dialogue that we've had.
I just wanted to make sure I was clear on.
Any comments regarding this? Ms. Egan, do you have any comment? I didn't want to put you on the spot. Ms. Healy, any further?
Ms. Kidby.
Mr. Hirons. I would like to make a comment before we vote. As most people know, I do not, I do not think this is the right way, thing to do. I, I believe that all, that we, we as a board did not commit to this as our, in our budget. I think we've tried to work to be transparent, and I think we have been. We said how we were going to do it, and we have done that. Now, this clerical error has resulted in a lot of problems. I will tell you that for me, this is like going to the bank and putting in a $1,000 check and then the next day you have a $10,000 that there was a mistake made. We don't expect to get that $9,000. I am horrified that this happened, and I have said that I was horrified that this happened. However, I do not think that treating employees differently, when we did not as a board adopt that particular budget, as a budget priority, that we said we would choose to treat employees differently, that is very, very troubling to me, that we are making a decision tonight that goes against our budget priorities and how we sped, said all. I am concerned about going forward with any kind of deficit budgeting, which we have done. I think we've had our finances under a lot of give and take with our funding body, and we are trying to prove that we know how to spend our money. This very much troubles me to do this tonight. However, I have listened as well to Dr. Benson talk about the concern about contracts, moving forward and moving beyond this. I have heard about problems and concerns in buildings among employees. I don't like hearing that. So there is a part of me that wants to stay and say, you know what, let's continue to drag this out. That is really where I would like to be. However, I think the most expeditious and best thing we can do tonight is to move on. I don't like it, as you all know, but I will do it because I think we need to move on. Because of the acrimony, the, all of that between the employee groups, to me, isn't worth it. I really would like us to be one team. I do think this divides, as long as this board is willing to look at something in, what did we say, January, for something for all employees so that there is not this disparity. I will support it, but this is a very difficult vote for me because I do not believe this is correct. So there is a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed?
No.
No.
Pull the board, please.
Ms. Egan.
No.
Ms. Hazard.
Yes.
Ms. Healy.
Yes.
Mr. Hirons.
Aye.
Ms. Kidby.
Yes.
Mr. McCosker.
Nope.
Motion passes by a vote of five to two, or four to two.
Four to two.
Thank you. Moving on, Ms. Egan, can you read us into closed session?
Pursuant to Section 2.2-3711A of the Code of Virginia, I move that the Stafford County School Board convene a closed meeting to discuss and consider personnel matters pursuant to the personnel exemption at Section 2.2-3711A1, appointment of personnel pursuant to the personnel exemption at Section 2.2-3711A1, and student matters pursuant to the exemption of Section 2.2-3711A2 of the Code of Virginia 1950 as amended.
Is there a second? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We are in closed session.